Welcome to the November 12th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Meeting. As you heard from the behind the scenes there, behind the booth, let me just, before we call roll call, let me summarize a couple of things. We have five items tonight. Two of them are administrative items, and then we have three public hearings. The way that works is staff will do a staff report. The applicant will come forward and do a presentation. Then you'll be able to make public comment for the three-minute period, and then the applicant would have time for rebuttal. And then the commission here will, when the hearing is closed, deliberate and make decisions. So with that, roll call. Tracy, please.
Luttrell.
Here.
Cappas.
Here.
Fleming. Here. McCracken. Here.
Thank you. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place types represent the form of future development as envisioned by residents of Coeur d'Alene. Place types will in turn provide the policy-level guidance that will inform the city's development ordinance. Each place type corresponds to multiple zoning districts that will provide a high-level detail and regulatory guidance.
Next, I would ask for a motion of approval of the minutes.
Mr. Iso move?
Second that. Roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That someday this may be good for manufacturing.
Those against?
But in recent times, we've had a trend in development towards C-17.
So now is public content, chance for public comment. You can come forward and address this with any matter that's not pertinent to the public hearings. This would also be a chance for you to speak on the two other business items that are administrative in nature.
No one participating there, so we will move on to staff comments. The next goal would be under education and learning and provide an educational environment that provides open access to resources for all people. And the objective would be to provide abundant opportunities for, for and access to lifelong learning, for and mastery of new skills, academic enrichment, mentoring programs, and personal growth.
I also wanted to thank those of you that attended the two training workshops recently. We had the development agreement workshop, and then we had our planning and growth workshop.
The next finding is finding B2, that public facilities and utilities are not available and adequate for the proposed use.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, Commissioner comments?
City staff from streets and engineering.
Seeing none. We will move on to the first of the other business items. This is an administrative item. It's not a public hearing per se. It requires action. Mike, are you ready? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. See staff's full comments on page 16 and 17 of the staff report. This is an administrative item. The applicant is. Next finding is finding B3, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. The site is generally flat, but slightly slopes to the southwest. There is approximately 25-foot drop in elevation on the subject property. The western portion of the site is vacant, is relatively flat to accommodate future development site for the Coeur d'Alene Hockey Academy. Here's that topographical map indicating the topography. Each white line is a 5-foot drop in elevation. So the decision point is to approve or deny the request of LLC for a one-year extension of an approved special use permit that allows for four activity uses. Two service activities and two commercial activities. Morning peak hour trip. Morning peak hour trips. Service activities or business support services. The applicant has submitted a conceptual site plan indicating how they propose to develop the property. This is the existing structures here, and the applicant is proposing a facility located here with parking to the south and around the building. Subject property is located on Shriver Way, just south of Kathleen. Here's a land use map indicating the surrounding land uses. To the north, we have commercial. To the west, we got multifamily and also single-family house here. We've got some commercial uses to the south. It's a multifamily under construction at the site. And to the east, we have some large agricultural tracks. There are seven recommended conditions. The applicant has indicated that the hardship that they're incurring is that the current economic and marketing additions with the high estimated construction costs are providing to be significant. So the planning commission is tasked with recommending zoning for the annexation request. The commission shall provide a recommendation regarding the requested C-17 zoning to city council, along with an evaluation of how the proposed annexation does or does not meet the required evaluation criteria for the requested annexation. Or you may by motion deny the one-year extension. You will need to consider this request for C-17 zoning in conjunction with annexation and make findings to recommend that the city council adopt the requested C-17 zoning with or without the conditions to be included in the annexation agreement, or reject the request at C-17 zoning.
This comes up frequently, does it not?
It does.
I have a question. And how many extensions can they ask for?
On a decision on C1, you give it a few options. When it says the existing industrial milling operation and manufacturing use must be removed from the site within 90 days of annexation, which is a close.
Other questions?
Or prior to a building permit, or site development permission may by motion, I get the last grant a one-year extension of the approved special use permit to November. I would choose to either go with the annexation.
Motion by Fleming, second by Cappas. All those in favor? Aye. Against?
So you're saying strike the 90 days?
Yeah, I'd strike the 90 days.
Mike, you're doing the second one as well?
I do have the second item. That's up to the commission. We just thought staff.
The gun doesn't necessarily go off in the annexation.
Staff was in communication with the client as part of the county, the applicant as well. So they're here to answer any questions regarding that 90 days as well.
Okay. And it could be either/or. I just think it's a little too blurry. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike, for your presentation. Always great. I had two questions, and the first one, I think you covered, and that is that the land use map calls this industrial and the allowable, or not allowable, but the suggested zoning is manufacturing and whatnot, not C-17. But as I understand, the land use map is a guide.
So the current zoning code allows a maximum of two feet of roof eaves that may extend to the front yard.
And you point out that, you know, there's been other examples where, because, you know, our vision years ago has changed, you know, kind of not unlike Shriver. You know, that was supposed to be manufacturing. And there's so many special use permits in there, it's really become morphing to something else. Maybe this is one of those?
Yeah, that is correct. I think at the time, the comp plan was developed, it was envisioning light manufacturing, but I think the actual, I think that's happening is the C-17, the commercial is the trend of development.
That said, in your opinion as a planner, you would find this to be compatible with what you see there.
I think C-17 is very compatible with this area.
Thank you. Another question, if you wouldn't mind, could you pull up this picture here?
Is consistent with the original intent of the project that was shown on the exhibit. As part of the PUD process, the applicant submits final development plans.
So one of the conditions here, number six, talks about, you know, when this comes into the city, you know, that I guess they have to build, get these buildings into city of Coeur d'Alene versus county building code. So any code violations that are in there, we're not just going to allow those to be grandfathered. They're going to have to, if there's a missing step somewhere or something's not right, it has to get fixed.
That's correct. The building department will have to go through and have to pull the changes permit to get the buildings to go.
So when I looked at this, I said, well, that makes sense to me, you know, but what about the other city department purviews like planning with respect to parking and landscaping of parking? That's a pretty ugly parking lot. I guess I'm guessing that when the new sheet of ice comes and so forth and whatnot, and there is a sketch in there showing the future, but are we okay with it looking like this? What's the trigger point that this ugly parking lot gets brought up to something that looks like a city park, a city stand?
Yeah, but the changes permit probably won't trigger the parking requirement, but the new building is going to trigger that.
Thanks, Mike. Questions for Mike? Commissioner Fleming?
I noticed that we have the gate for the private residences just to the west of Lot 4. So this is not behind gates. It's in the public sphere.
Mike, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, and it shows easiest on birdseye, I read it was on page three of the packet we received. Have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Cappas.
Mike, thanks for the presentation. Few questions, one about the setback on the 5-foot.
On the birdseye view?
Do you see any challenges with that in terms of?
It wasn't illustrated on there. It's not illustrated on this.
I'm just trying to figure out why that setback in particular. I understand at the base level.
The area that is outlined as a subject property, none of that is in the county and city, right? It's all in the county?
Nothing's, yeah, this property's all in the county.
But there is a small building showing as C-17, right above it on one of the aerials. And I'm assuming that if you go to page four, the upper left, it shows a C-17, yeah, right there.
Yeah, this is C-17 zoning in the city.
Do you see this being an issue with other properties in the future?
That's all, it's in that area that's in the city unless we cross Celtics.
Questions to Mike?
I think I have a better list of the city limits. The applicant is here to make a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
This, this green area is all in the county, or this little island or donut hole, whatever you call it. This is all in the county, and the city is surrounding it right here. This is all the city.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nate Dyke.
Other than, the property right now has a shading ring, and it also has a hockey school on it, and I understand they're combined in some way.
You'll have to talk to the applicant on how those two businesses interact, but the Frontier Ice Arena is on a separate parcel owned by separate people. This is the Coeur d'Alene Hockey Academy School that has, works with the Frontier Ice Arena for their facilities, and I think the applicant can better speak to how that works.
But the hockey academy would be independent of, as far as physically on the property, it's a separate structure from the ice arena.
It's just one of those housekeeping items that just didn't get picked up and relate with the.
And is there any reason why, if that's all there legally right now, they need to be incorporated into the city? Not that I object to that, I'm just curious as to why.
That'd be a good question for the applicant. They're allowed to apply for annexation.
So you're saying this was in the PUD package and kind of an oversight?
That's all. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, Mike, I just got one, and it may be for you or maybe for Hillary, so I don't know, but this is the second time in my time up here where I've heard of some form of industrial, whether it's light industrial or in this case industrial zone property.
Wasn't real clear, but intent was there from the get-go.
Turning to something else, both cases, it was commercial.
Question, Nate?
Is there a picture of how much industrial capacity the city has?
Commissioners?
And is it, like, is there concerns from the city about it being reduced?
I'll make a motion to approve. I don't see any issues.
Well, right now, this property isn't manufacturing, and we have our zoning map that shows all our manufacturing areas.
We'll try not to repeat this over and over. Some cities would tax you for that 5-foot extra housing.
It's zone county commercial.
So we don't.
But our comp plan is indicating light manufacturing and manufacturing.
This was envisioned in the future to be a manufacturing area.
Second by Luttrell. All those in favor? Aye. Against?
But we do have a large manufacturing area, a large Shriver.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next is the first of three public hearings. This would be a special use permit, SP4-24, a request for a special use permit to allow a minimal care facility in the R8 zoning district. Thanks, Mike.
And Mike, we are just, or Hillary, or Randy, we're just making a recommendation, even though we're doing findings, city council, when this goes to them, they're, they will have a decision of changing this particular item. So we're just doing a recommendation, but still doing our findings.
It is a 6.016-acre parcel located north of Hanley Avenue and west of Courtier Boulevard.
Okay, have the applicant come on up?
Lot 2, Lot 37 of a Trail 6 addition.
State your name, the city you live in, and where are you in?
Hi, good evening. Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering.
And the decision point, the applicant is requesting a approval. And the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Help you out.
I do. Go right ahead, Scott. Thank you. I haven't said I do in 15 years, so thank you. Good evening, Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering. Ryan Casper, Director of Operations, Coeur d'Alene Hockey Academy. Just, Mike did a great job throughout this whole process. I just want to thank him for that. Just to kind of answer some of the questions, and then I'll go to the place for some more questions. This use does complement the hockey ice arena that's adjacent to us. The two separate owners, complementary uses, I think probably had something to do with this location for the selection for Coeur d'Alene Hockey Academy, so the other uses in the area consist of gyms and recreational uses and residential uses. I know that the old, as a kid, the YJs Stockyard was next door, and so I know that that is, that everything's growing, everything's changing, and so the land use map is kind of a guideline, as Mr. Harry said, so this use, as it sits in the county right now, does complement the use that is in the city of Coeur d'Alene. And again, I feel it's a great fit for the city of Coeur d'Alene. We do have no objections to the recommendations for the annexation agreement. We are working diligently with the city planners, engineers, and building department. We've had several visits to the property, just to get a jumpstart on bringing this building into conformance. Any issues, we're already addressing. And we have a good relationship with the city staff to just take care of those problems. Upgrades to the site. Currently, there's roughly 60 students that'll be enrolled this August, beginning of this month in this academy. Plans to double, maybe even triple that. It's a great facility, offering educational and recreational learning and growth for these young athletes. The new facility will offer a wide variety of sporting opportunities. I attend real-life ministries in post-falls. We built a field house and a field that provided a plethora of sporting opportunities, and that is just taken off. And that's similar to what this field house will do for this area. It won't just be used just for the Coeur d'Alene Hockey Academy, it would be a sporting facility that we hope to incorporate youth programs in as well. And that's why you see the parking layout the way you see it.
30 seconds remaining. Which does qualify under our activity group.
Not for the staff report.
I was, I don't know, sometimes you can't read your hand right.
Let her continue.
Thank you. The project amenities may also include facilities such as community center that could have a gym, game, or activity room, and large meeting or gathering room. In addition to the residences, as I mentioned, a guest suite for family members or visitors requiring overnight lodging is also being proposed.
This is infill property. It makes sense from an engineering standpoint, in my professional opinion, to bring this into the city of Coeur d'Alene. I used to work at this facility, one of its go-kart family fun. I was, shouldn't say I was 14. I was 14 and had a job, so I loved working there, and it's crazy to see where it's become in that area, but it's amazing.
There was only one, and this is Hutter Road, and this was.
And there was a question about the legality of bringing this into the city. There's really no legality, just bringing it into the city will allow city services, water, sewer, to serve the facility which allows the growth that is needed to continue to grow this educational and future sporting opportunities for the youth. So I'll stand for any more questions.
Thank you for that. There is one.
This area is single-family only as far as place size.
Sort of concern, not a great one, I don't think, that maybe you could eliminate any concern. There's a statement that city engineer indicated that if an event drew more than 192 vehicles, they could have overflow parking impact.
Okay, yeah, it's a simple.
Bear with me why we're not going to have cars parked on Celtics and into somebody's neighborhood and people parking in the apartments and all of that.
Currently, there's a shared parking agreement in place between the ice arena and this facility, and that will continue. It'll actually grow and be more defined once we have this site plan approved from the city, and so we'll have additional parking, and those events would be at the ice arena or in the two sheets device once we have the new facility established. So we'll have a shared parking agreement between the two properties, and that document will govern that use, and again, the owners and the complementary uses. We'll just go hand-in-hand on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you.
And then the existing transit network and the subject property are located in this area on all three of the blocks.
At this time, Scott, if we have any other questions that come up, you'll have an opportunity to come up.
Your staff report does include the comprehensive plan policy framework.
Excuse me, I have Dennis Spencer opposed, but did not indicate whether he wants to speak or not.
Health and safety and jobs and economy.
Sally Spencer is opposed, she did not indicate.
The design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location, setting, and existing uses.
So if there's anyone else here that didn't sign up for this and does want to speak, come on up. If not, I'll ask Scott if he has anything to add from what he's just led. If not, I'm going to close the public testimony on this and bring it to the Commissioners for a little bit of discussion and a recommendation.
And then the applicant is here, the architect and property owner, so.
The findings, please.
The cottages are here on the north side, and they'll have street furniture and driveways. And they're what we would consider to be.
I'd jump in with some discussion and say that.
On the south side are the care facilities. Each home would have 16 beds.
This is an area that fronts a city street.
And then the guest suite would be here for family.
You know, the first responders that go to that building are probably going to be Coeur d'Alene Police and Fire. It looks like it's in the city. It's addressed in Coeur d'Alene, you know. So, you know, it's kind of, looks like the city, feels like the city.
And this is the floor plan for House 1. As I mentioned, there are 16 beds per building, and there are five of the care facilities.
We do have, we do have a comp plan goal that talks about, you know, providing diverse recreation options. I'm not a huge hockey fan, but a lot of people are, and I think that this is an opportunity to encourage, you know, public or private recreation facilities for citizens of all ages, so I think that's great.
And the maximum height allowed in the R8 zone with a minimal care facility would be 45 feet. A typical single-family, maximum height is 32 feet.
I'll make a motion. So I mentioned there would be some cottages that I was showing you on that site plan.
This matter having come before the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 13th, 2024, to consider A-1-24, a request to recommend that the zoning of 5.1 acres adjacent to Salty Way, if is suggested or is recommended to be annexed into C-17 property. Location is 3505 West Salty Way. Coeur d'Alene, 8314. The owners are Sean and Renee Lutien. Applicant is MacArthur Engineering, Scott MacArthur. Findings, in fact, we've fulfilled all our requirements of postings and notifications across multiple methods. The comp plan, A4, the comprehensive plan, future land use designates this property as a general industrial place type. This motion will in fact move us out of that into C-17. The staff identified comp plan goals and objectives for particular consideration by planning and zoning. In particular, I would like to identify our goal, EL3, providing an educational environment that provides open access and resources for all people, providing abundant opportunities for lifelong learning, fostering mastery of new skills, and academic enrichment and mentoring programs. And the growth and development goal of mixed land uses, this is adjacency to a compatible and very intertwined sports facility. We also will be improving our walkability and access to this area, and jobs and economy. This will obviously employ a lot of people and bring a lot of interest to the hockey fans that exist in this town. The interior portion of the subject property, looking southwest across Hanley Road South and toward the vacant property, and Hutter Road is further west. And my last slide is a view from the south side of Hanley Avenue, along the bike trail, looking west along Hanley Avenue, and the subject property would be on the left over here. So the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. So your staff report does include on pages 26 and 27, information from engineering, streets, water, fire, parks, and wastewater. They did review the application and the request in regards to public utilities and public The planning commission may, as a condition of approval, establish reasonable requirements as a conditions of approval to mitigate any impacts that would adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. Please be specific if additional conditions are added to the motion. So there are seven required conditions, and I believe staff was in contact with you on Friday afternoon. We did make an amendment to condition number two, and I'll read it out loud. Well, I'll go through a couple of them. First of all, the maximum number of residents shall be set by the special use permit. So as far as a minimal care facility special use permit request, it does require planning commission to set the number. The request is for a total number of 128, as far as the maximum number that they would like. We also modified condition two from what was sent out in the packet originally and worked with the applicant on this. The applicant shall generally adhere to the conceptual layout of the project as shown on the two site plans submitted with the special use permit application. This includes preserving the vehicular access and ensuring adequate parking throughout, ensuring the open space, landscaping, and amenities meet or exceed the conceptual plans and not exceeding 24 senior living units, five homes, and one guest house. And then the fire department added one must meet fire flow requirements of the 2018 IFC and fire hydrant spacing requirements. Water department added any conditioned main extensions and/or fire hydrants and services will be the responsibility of the developer at their expense, and any additional service will have cap fees due at building permit time. And then this proposed special use permit will fall under the wastewater policy number 716, one parcel, one sewer lateral. And then sewer cap fees and Hutter fee will be due at the time of building permit. So action alternatives, the planning commission will need to consider this request and make the appropriate findings to approve. Approve with conditions, deny or deny with prejudice.
Thank you, Tammy.
End of my presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions for Tammy? Mr. Cappas?
Were you going to ask about the 24 or 20?
Well, I think it's 20.
It is 20, but the stipulation was no more than 24.
I know, it's different in different parts of the staff report.
So I didn't want to cut you off, so if you want to keep going.
No, I guess, yeah, it's 20 throughout, right?
It's 20 throughout, except for that last piece, when you were talking about the impacts, you said no more than 24 units.
I'll let the applicant clarify, but the maximum number that the planning commission, we'll need to set a number. The maximum number that the applicant has requested is a total of 128.
128 people in 24 units.
Correct.
Even though we've changed the plan to 20 units.
The applicant did reduce the number, but they would like some flexibility on adding more, and that's why we.
Give it a little boost.
That condition.
And one guest cottage.
Correct.
And maybe four people. Okay.
Thank you.
That's the only question.
Other questions?
Falling back on our first item came before, since this is really, in the applicant's thing, he mentioned there, they will not exceed 129. Yet again, we say 128. I hope they're clear that what we're acting on now is 128. And secondly, I have a question of, I am, I'm not an attorney, although sometimes I like to think I am. The applicant, I guess on the stipulation here, the applicant shall generally adhere, I'm not so sure about generally, but then it goes on the second, this includes preserving. I would think that the generally adhere is, doesn't pertain to the includes. The includes is a separate thing, and the inclusions will be there, and the other things are generally adhered to. I think that's what we, at least that's how I would read it.
So I have had a lot of conversations.
Well, I'm a city attorney, you know. Does that make any sense, Randy, the question I have? Well, anyway, that's my question.
Right, the generally adhere is intended to offer some flexibility within the, but they, if there are specific parameters that are explicitly stated, then those have to be met.
And is the second sentence that says this includes, are those specific?
Well, I mean, that second sentence is fairly vague as well, where it says adequate parking. So it needs to generally adhere to those principles as well.
So whatever's sitting on it, members, so in the event it comes back, we have additional discussion. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Commissioner McCracken.
I have a question about parking. So I know that, it looks like the cottages are going to have the garage parking inside the garage, and maybe, looks like maybe one parking spot outside of the garage, but then for the five homes, I'm, see, I don't know where it says how many, I think there's around 40-something spots for 80 residents.
So the parking requirement is one space for every six beds, so they are overparked as far as what?
As far as what's required.
But that includes all the staff parking too, to staff those facilities.
That, the one per six does include that.
It does include that.
It doesn't separate residents from, uh, a caregiver. It's just that general parking requirement.
Cause it seems, I mean, I guess that's probably the, the rule. It just seems pretty light considering the staff parking needed. And then visitors, there wouldn't be a whole lot. Um, looks like you have about five spots per house. And a couple in front of the activity center and the office. So that would, that would be a concern I have is there's not a lot, there's not really an opportunity for street parking anywhere within this beauty.
Well, this is a special use permit.
Or, well, a special use permit, but it, I guess, and within this plan, there's not this, they're not, they're like private driveways. They're not wide enough for parking on them. It doesn't look like.
No. So they were only, they provided twenty-two stalls and as I mentioned, uh, there's one space for every six beds. So they are definitely overparked as far as what's required. Okay.
Yeah. Atlas Middle School, the healthcare center across from there? No residents have cars. I mean, it's empty. They've got staff parking. There's nobody there except visitor parking. And most residents are not car.
And we haven't ever had an issue or a complaint with any concern about the parking.
Yeah, it just seemed, because these, since these are all separate houses, the staffing required would be higher because they're not connected. And I just wanted to clarify the parking, that they met the parking rule.
Yep. Thank you. I do want to add one more item. Late Friday afternoon, we also did receive an email from Kim Stevenson. She's with the Coeur d'Alene Airport requesting, uh, navigation easement. Um, the applicant and property owners have been working with them and they have addressed all of the, um, requirements for that. So that's in process currently.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions, Tammy? Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, let me back up just a little bit. I should have, uh, for the record, uh, asked the commission whether there's any conflict of interest. Seeing none, let the records show that. Thank you. So, um, first up on the signup sheet is speaking for the applicant, that'd be, uh, Todd Butler. If you would come forward and before I swear you in, we got some new folks in the control booth back there. I just, uh, make it clear that you, you're not subject to the three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. You're, you're not, uh, a signup speaker per se. For the record, uh, you indicate you're in favor and you are speaking as the applicant. Uh, if I could have your name and, uh, city, please?
Todd Butler, city of Coeur d'Alene.
Do you solemnly swear and or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you, Todd. Please proceed.
So, um, I'm, I'm just open to any questions. I will address the parking because it sounds like there's a concern there. The residential care, the eighty beds, the five homes, larger homes that you see there, nobody drives. So none of the residents will have vehicles. The parking calculation for that, like Tammy said, was one per six beds. So that comes out to about twenty-seven spaces. You know, three parking spaces and we look at, we, we did a calculation about two employees per building. We're, we're about double the parking requirement for those. And, uh, the owner Valerie has done a number of assisted living. We've worked on those in the past and she will attest to that, that it works really good. In addition, it's elderly housing, I think, is one per s-. Uh, it's, it's a little different too. If you look at elderly housing, I treated it as duplexes, which is two parking spaces per home, which I provide. So I just thought I'd err on the side of a higher density. So every, we have the, the driveway as well as the, um, as the garage. So the additional spaces, there's quite a few extra for not only visitors, but, um, if, if perhaps there was a person that drove from their duplex over to the community center, there's a place for them to park. So I, I think you would find that, um, in our parking calculations and everything else. And another thing I just wanted to address really quickly or briefly was, um, I know there was some concern about the language in, in the, um, planning. And what, what I had talked to the planning department about was these are conceptual plans at an early stage. And so we wanted to have some flexibility. We don't know the exact housing type that we're going to do. The very first plan, I said, well, it looks like the maximum we could get is twenty-four duplexes on here. And then we're playing with that model and we don't know if we're going to have some one bedrooms, some three bedrooms. And we just said, well, let's, we know that we can, if we pack them in there, maximum density is twenty-four of, of those homes. So let's just stick with that. The likelihood, as you can see from our latest site plan, is, is, it's probably going to be a lower density, but we don't know that yet. If, if we're asking for the senior living homes, this could take on the form of a triplex. It could be a four unit. It's, it's just whatever the market, uh, cause, cause we're developing this, we're doing market studies and we're trying to find what's going to be the best fit for the, this community and, and for this product. So we just left that number. The additional one bedroom or the one person, the one twenty-nine, I think was either a misunderstanding by myself, but I thought we needed to count one person for the guest suite. So we, so we added that in. One twenty-eight is fine. Uh, you know, it's whatever, whatever we need to do, but are there any other questions?
So you're really saying it's not going to exceed twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so my understanding of this process is you're, you're approving a hundred and twenty-eight people total living there, which is a much lower density than if this was all single family housing like it was originally planned for. So from a density standpoint, it goes down. And then from just a use standpoint, it's just a process we need to go through for this type of development in an R eight.
Are there going to be affordable housing for seniors on the cottage side or just market rate?
I think it's market rate and we're still looking at those models.
Okay.
I will say that from this being listed in the paper today, I, I got a call at my office and somebody wanted to buy one. And I said, well, we're a little ahead of the gun right, right away. But anyway, uh, it, it sounds, sounds like there's going to be a lot of interest in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else I can answer?
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let me work through the signup sheet here, uh, for the control booth in the back, uh, three minute, uh, uh, and for you all, three minutes, uh, if you would adhere to that going forward, uh, for, for those coming up. Uh, Valerie, uh, Zahari? Uh, do you wish, uh, you indicated you're in favor, uh, as a partner in this, uh, but you did not indicate whether you wish to testify.
If there was questions, I was willing to get up and, and answer any other questions.
So if there's questions, we can call on you. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Matt France, uh, indicated opposition. Did not indicate whether you wish to, uh, address the commission, do you?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Thank you.
Uh, name and city for the record, please.
Matt France, I reside in Dalton Gardens.
Uh, do you solemnly swear and or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Three minutes, please.
Okay. I only heard about this just, uh, very briefly ago. So I, as I was sitting there, just wrote out some, uh, thoughts. So I'm, I'll basically be reading from this, but, uh, I own an assisted living facility in Post Falls. In fact, uh, Ms. Zahari was part of the organization over two decades ago with that, um, with that facility. I have a significant concern with the potential impact of adding additional assisted living units in this area. Uh, I'm, I'm not in the senior living that's independent. Uh, so the twenty or twenty-four units of the, the duplexes, the cottage style, I really can't, wouldn't weigh in on that. I have no background or information on that. But as far as the, um, assisted living side goes, this is an area, Cootney County, that has been, um, overbuilt, uh, in my opinion. And I think there's a lot of information that would bear this out for the last two plus decades. Uh, we've just never been in a place where there's really a good equilibrium between supply and demand. There's been a lot of strain, a lot of, you know, stress on providers. And it still feels like the, the dip, supply is still waiting for the demand to catch up. Now, we all have heard, of course, of the silver wave and the baby boomers that, you know, what, uh, are approaching or maybe have just started to kind of arrive at the age where some of the senior living, um, is necessary, but, um, still not quite there yet, I, I think I would say. And on the one hand, I'm generally sort of a laissez-faire, you know, kind of approach to businesses and let the, you know, uh, government regulations kind of stay out and let businesses compete. And that often produces better outcomes. In this industry and given the existing nature of the, um, supply issue that I, that I just talked about a little bit that already exists, I think there's bound to be collateral damage that I do think you should be, um, concerned with. So what does that look like? I think it really comes in, in, in two forms. Uh, a lot of you may have observed over the past couple or, or few years, the, um, impact of staff shortages that we've had in this area. It's nationwide, but in this area, my observation has been that it's especially acute, the staff shortages. With all the people that have moved in, you would think that wouldn't be the case, but it certainly does. I've seen many retailers, um, restaurants and other types of business, businesses who've sort of reacted to staff shortages by either, uh, truncating their business hours, you know, instead of being open until ten o'clock at night, they close at seven. I, Rogers.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Oh, well, let me go a little quicker then. So suffice to say there are staffing challenges and shortages. What this looks like, um, to an industry like ours that is, uh, acutely reliant upon, uh, high levels of staff is that it forces us, and, and we're a business who can't shorten our hours. We can't change the way we operate. You're fully open, twenty-four seven, fully staffed. Uh, and there's no option. You can't reduce that.
Three minutes are up.
Can I, is there?
Wrap up, please.
Can I request? Okay. Uh, just, uh, briefly longer. So, um, it forces us to rely upon staffing agencies, which charge exorbitant rates, forty dollars an hour for someone who's eighteen years old, no experience. My facility spent seventy thousand dollars in one month earlier this year, relying upon staffing agencies to fill those open shift requirements. Here's where the sort of collateral damage side comes in. A lot of facilities, um, will choose to operate at less than ideal staffing levels, which means these residents who are vulnerable, who are dependent, they can be neglected, unfortunately. It's a difficult cha- uh, place to be in. And then finally, the other, just very briefly, the other impact is that in order for a facility like ours to be able to compete and to pay those wages and those ever increasing, not just wages, but those staffing agency costs, we have to raise our rates ever again, year after year, really high, five to percent or more that we charge to our residents, who are these vulnerable seniors who are typically reliant upon, um, you know, limited funds, limited income. And their ability to pay those is, is, uh, well, is, is very limited. So some challenges that come with it. I don't think there's a need for this facility. I'd be happy to talk to Ms. Zahari or anybody else to, you know, share that information and, um, and I'll try and reach out to her later to talk about that as well and provide some information. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the signup sheet is Dick Cook, uh, did not indicate favor or opposition.
Can I, can I ask a question real quick? Just, uh, to Randy, based on what was discussed there. Randy, we were talking about a business in Post Falls. We were talking about, uh, gentlemen, talking about concerns from Dalton Gardens. And we're talking about, uh, when I look at this in terms of comprehensive plans and goals, objectives from Coeur d'Alene. So can you help me better understand from the standpoint of legally how we look at this rubric regionally instead of just our mandate here in city of Coeur d'Alene to focus on business development, growth, the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan for Coeur d'Alene?
Yes. The goals and the objectives of the comprehensive plan are what are supposed to govern your decision. Public comment, public testimony, uh, serves as an aid for you to understand perhaps the comprehensive plan. You can take it or leave it. Uh, if, if t- testimony doesn't meet, uh, the Coeur d'Alene's public or, or comprehensive plan or zoning code, then it's, it shouldn't fall into your, or come into your decision. But certainly anybody's public comment, public testimony can help you understand the issues, can help direct you to other parts of the comprehensive plan. But yes, you look at your comprehensive plan, your zoning code.
Great. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Chair.
John?
Uh, go ahead.
I'd like to ask a question of Todd, if I could, please. Don't mind. And in operations such as this, we regulate the end land use, our building officials regulate the construction. Is there anyone who regulates the use and who is that? The state agency, health agency, whatever that.
That regulates the use?
Yes.
So there is state rate, um, and, and Valerie can probably answer that question better than me because she's on the business side of that. But it is regulated by the state. And I will also mention in the project narrative that I would guess that you, that I, I wrote for this, it lists a number of the ways that we meet the comp, goals of the comprehensive plan. So I'd like to just point that out also. But yeah, it, it does get, at the end of the day, if, if you don't, you're, it's for review every year. Every year with the state agency, they go through it and yeah, you have to maintain all those requirements.
Thank you.
Keep your license. Thank you.
Uh, next up on the signup sheet is Dick Cook, did not indicate whether, uh, you were in favor or opposition or whether you wish to speak.
Yeah. Um, I really did.
Do you wish to speak? Could I get your name and, uh, city, please?
Sure. Richard Cook, Coeur d'Alene.
Coeur d'Alene. And, uh, do you solemnly swear and or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Three minutes, please.
No, I really, the reason I approached just to talk to you, I, uh, wanted a spot to be able to comment on the, uh, Atlas Waterfront agenda item.
It's coming.
Yeah, which is coming up. And I must have signed the wrong sheet.
Okay.
On there to do that.
Okay. We'll remember you on that.
We'll get, we'll get you later then.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Uh, anyone else, uh, wishing to speak on this, uh, matter? Uh, okay. Uh, with that, I would, uh, offer rebuttal time of, if Todd, you or Valerie have any, anything you'd like to offer in, in closing?
I'm Valerie Zahari.
Oh, uh, let me, let me, uh, get your name and, uh, city for the record, please.
Valerie Zahari, Post Falls.
Uh, do you solemnly swear and or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Um, well, I am Valerie Zahari. I'm a partner in Hemmingson Senior Living, a new company that we are developing, creating. Um, I have thirty-five years' experience in healthcare, uh, administration and development here in this area, in this community. And I'm a hospital administrator by trade, also licensed administrator for skilled care rehab centers as well as assisted living. So I have a lot of experience in this type of development, operations, administration, ownership and, um, creation. And so I want to rebut as to the comments that were made on the, uh, facilities, the beds that are requi- or that are, um, utilized here in our area. And, um, there is a real need for this type of, of facility in our area. Now, I understand the comments from a competitor and from a competitor's nature, but I can guarantee you from the facilities that I've developed, multiple have been in here in the city of the Co- of Coeur d'Alene. And currently they are full and have a waiting list for beds for this type of assisted living. We, uh, this, our facility will provide different levels of care, including memory care. And our concept of our senior cottages is something new to the, uh, industry and has been shown to be very, um, well-received in the area of Spokane, Spokane Valley, up on the South Hill. And some of those senior cottages in particular have one to two-year waiting lists for those type of, uh, facilities for our seniors. In our creation and development of our complex, we're offering all types of different amenities and different price points. And so, um, I feel that this is an absolutely fabulous addition to the Coeur d'Alene area, especially in this area in particular of the city and its development. And our philosophy is locating our facilities within an area of a subdivision. Typically, we like to be across the street from a school or nearby a church. And with the different developments that are going to be happening in the future across the street, uh, we feel this is just a great addition for our residents and our seniors and, uh, and for the community. So.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, I'll, I'll close public comment and, uh, ask the commission if they. With that, I'll close public comment and ask the commission if they have some discussion or choose to make a motion on this matter. Commissioner Ward?
I really have no problem at all with this use. It's something I think we desperately need. We keep reading elderly people are moving here, senior citizens, whatever. And I think that it helps address a potential housing problem. If people are retired, they live in a house, they don't want to move, they can't afford to buy a comparable house, but there's a senior facility they can move into that works for them, that opens another house for a family that needs a full-size house. I truthfully would prefer it was probably a little closer to town with this much more activity. But I know Corteur is building the site to the south. They have commercial development, mixed-use right at the top in your own handling. That's a pretty straight shot to most of the commercial activity that anyone would really need. And it makes it pretty easy for visitors to get there, if there are any. But I have no problem with this at all.
Are there discussion, motions?
Well, I think they should be complimented for increasing the supply. I do, you know, whether how we talk about housing and whatnot, and the lack of supply. And I congratulate it, and I'm certainly going to support it.
I appreciate the variety of houses, the types of housing within there. I would say, from my experience, I have a background in healthcare a little bit too. So I'm in real estate, and I would say the cottage housing right now is a one- to five-year waitlist, depending on the price point. So there's really high demand for that type of housing particularly. And it's a good one that you can kind of age into place, like you could start there and maybe move into a higher level of care. And memory care is a really big need right now. So I think both of those are fulfilling a need, and being close to a large neighborhood is great because hopefully, family living nearby will visit often, and that'll help the residents. So I'm in support.
Commissioner Fleming, did you have a comment?
I think it's excellent. I think Todd's done a great job on mixing, blending in with the Coeur d'Alene place, feeling with the cottages, and then a more mountain modern, which is forward-thinking because we are going to have younger people becoming old. We're all starting to see that ahead. I think it's very well-planned. The growth around it is going to be phenomenal. And a lot of people want to stay near their families, who are going to live nearby. And to have mom and dad, maybe, I had Parkinson's dad, my mom cared for him right to the end. And she was there, and they brought in nursing care when she could no longer, an ex-nurse and a surgeon, could no longer care for him because he was just, when he fell down, she couldn't get him back up. The cottages give that opportunity to a husband and wife, and maybe that three-bedroom is a caregiver. That's what they scrambled to do in a two-bedroom apartment. So, and we are, right now, Orchard Ridge is building finally. Got around to it, it's been three years in the making, and they are finally expanding their facility because of demand. So we can stick our heads in the sand, or we can accept what's the future. We have an aging populace. We have a fire station nearby on Atlas. We have a hospital nearby instantly on Seltice. What better place to, you know, conclude your life? So maybe a little chapel would be good, too. But that's just me. So I'm all for this, and I'm happy to make a motion unless Mr. Koppis has something to say.
I just got a question for Hillary, and really, it's just teaching me and maybe some other people out there that are listening. In some cases, when we're going through these processes, we have details. You can't get a snowplow truck back there, so this is not in conformance with city code. Therefore, keep working. Come back. Let us see it again. In this case, we've got kind of a broad mandate of an idea that's going to fit. And the idea is, yeah, it looks good, subject to fitting within the constraints of codes underneath the city. So it's a little bit different that we don't have the nth layer of detail, 129, 128, 2420, that we do in some cases. Can you just kind of speak to that?
Yes, I think that's a great differentiation. So this one is different than a subdivision. It's kind of all contained. It's going to be private drive aisles and all of that. The parking, as they indicated, it'll meet or exceed the code requirements. And so that condition, we built in some flexibility to allow them to kind of design that, but they will have to meet the minimum parking requirements, the landscaping, and all of that. We wanted to make sure that it either meets or exceeds what's presented before us at this time. The big thing with the special use permit is just making sure it meets those findings. And so I think that's the differentiation between this and a subdivision or a PUD that has additional findings for you.
Thanks, Ms. Hillary. Chair, I know further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming, would you like to make a motion and walk through the findings, please?
I will.
And before you do that, I would echo all of your great comments up here, and I'm in support of this as well. I think, you know, the statement in the comp plan that says that, you know, we want to achieve a balance of housing types. And it's not just affordable housing, it's assisted housing and things of that nature. So with that, I'm in support. Please proceed.
Okay. This matter, coming before Planning and Zoning Commission on November 12th, 2024, to consider SP 4-24, a request for approval of a special use permit to allow a minimal care facility in the R8 residential at eight units per acre zoning. Location, A plus or minus 6.016 acre parcel located north of Hanley, west of Corteur Boulevard, Lot 2, Block 37, the Trail 6th Edition. The owners are Core Development LLC. The applicant is Todd Butler, the architect, on behalf of the client. Findings of fact, we did in fact meet items A1, which was, we posted this hearing. There was a notification sent out to the public and that we informed them by the Coeur d'Alene Press and I think probably Sportsman Review, and that it has been made out to the public. A2, public testimony was received today, November 12th, 2024. Number 3, A3, the subject property is currently vacant, along with the surrounding area. It is bordered by city streets on all four sides, so we certainly have the infrastructure, with Hanley Avenue abiding the parcel to the south, Corteur Boulevard on the east, Shedhorn Avenue to the north, and Alacat Drive to the west of the proposed project. Subject site is, as I said, 6.016 acres. And I'm just going to jump through a little bit here. A4, the plus or minus six-acre site is currently zoned residential at eight units per acre. The requested minimal care facility is an allowed use with a special use permit, which is being requested today. The applicant is proposing five residential care facilities with 16 beds in each home for up to 80 residents, along with up to 24 maximum senior living cottages with up to 48 additional residents at this time. The maximum number of care residents would not exceed 128. Parking for the care facility has been met and exceeded. Parking ratio for a minimal care facility is one for six beds. A maximum of 128 beds are proposed, and the applicant has provided 22 required parking spaces. In addition, 24 garages and 24 surface spaces, which may veer toward 20 and 20. The total building square footage is plus or minus 11,053 square feet and is a typical size for each of the five homes, providing 16 beds each. A5, the comp plan future land use map designation as a single-family neighborhood place type. The comp plan states that the compatible zoning for the single-family neighborhood place types include R1, R3, R5, and R8. Subject property abuts R8 to the north, northwest and east, and the south side of Hanley Avenue. Vacant properties are zoned R17 and C17. A6, the staff report includes applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives. The commission, I want to identify a number, and I jumped back into a massive document here, but I'm not going to go on too long. But we have multiple goals for our comp plans, and I particularly think that Goal C13, Coeur d'Alene will strive to be livable for median and below-income levels, including young families, working-class, low-income, fixed-income households. Will also support the objective C13.1, efforts to preserve existing housing stock and provide opportunities for new affordable and workforce housing. Goal C14, that Coeur d'Alene is a community that works to support cultural awareness, diversity, and inclusiveness, including the old people or the aged people. And then we have, want to do a GD1, develop a mix of land uses throughout the city that balance housing and employment while preserving the qualities that make Coeur d'Alene great. This is in fact a mixed-use development type, and there's no commercial here except for the ownership of the care facility itself. It is a very walkable area, and that's another, one of our goals is to be walkable and have access to major thoroughfares. GD2 is another goal, to ensure appropriate high-quality infrastructure to accommodate community needs. We've more than exceeded that. This is a service to the community and a growing cohort of aging population. And we may not be there yet, and there may not be a wave, but I do believe we're going to see that. Someday, we may need some help ourselves here. Goal HS1, support social, mental, and physical health in Coeur d'Alene and the greater region. The objective HS1.2, expand services for the city's aging population and other at-risk groups. Memory care in particular can hit you earlier than you think. Goal JE1, retain, grow, and attract businesses. This in fact is something I do believe we need here. And then finally, city departments have indicated that the project will be served by existing streets and facilities, and the project will result in approximately 307 trips per day, primarily staff. So frontage improvements not already completed under the Trail subdivision will be completed with this project. They'll adhere to the city building department on the needs. And conclusions of law, based on the foregoing findings of fact, the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the following conclusions of law. B1, the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. B2, the design and planning of the site is compatible with location, is basically a flat site. It's the setting, which is open tract right at the moment, and existing uses on adjacent properties are anticipated in at least an R8 fashion. B3, the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. And we have a decision. The decision is the Planning and Zoning Commission, pursuant to the foregoing findings of fact and conclusions of law, has determined that the proposed special use permit request for the special use permit, double-double, for minimal care facility in the R8 zoning district does comply with the required evaluation criteria, and the special use permit request should be approved with the following conditions. Planning is itemized. Number one, the maximum number of residents shall be set with the special use permit at 128 residents. The two, the applicant shall generally adhere to the conceptual layout of the project as shown on the two-site plans submitted with the special use permit application. This includes preserving the vehicular access and ensuring adequate parking throughout, ensuring the open space, landscaping, and amenities meet or exceed the conceptual plans, and not exceeding 24 senior living units, five homes, and one guest house. And a recreational facility, we kind of left that out. We want to keep that. Fire must meet fire flow requirements of 2018 IFC and fire hydrant spacing requirements. Water pointed out, any additional main extensions and/or fire hydrants and services will be the responsibility of the developer at their expense. And five, any additional service will have cap fees due at building permitting. Wastewater has asked for six, that this proposed special use will fall under WW policy number 716, one parcel, one sewer lateral. Seven, sewer cap fees and the hutter fee will be due at time of the building permit. I so move that we do proceed with this approval.
Motion by Fleming to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by McCracken. Roll call, Tracy, please.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Flaming?
Yes.
McCracken?
Yes.
And Koppis?
Yes.
Thank you very much. As a special use permit, this is a final decision unless appealed. So as such, please note that any final decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission is appealable within 15 days of the decision pursuant to sections 17.09.705 through 17.09.715 of Title 17 zoning. Thank you. Next hearing up is going to be a three-part hearing for annexation of a 2.12-acre parcel from County Agricultural Suburban to City R12 with an associated PUD and associated subdivision at 3415 North 15th Street. Sean will give us that staff report. Commissioners, do you have any conflict of interest? Seeing none, thank you. Sean, please proceed. And for the control guys in the back, again, this is a staff presentation, not subject to the three minutes. Thank you. Sean?
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Ingalls. As was alluded to, this is a three-part request. It is an annexation, a PUD, as well as a subdivision. So there are three parts. Each of them come with separate findings, a total of 14 findings. So it's a big one. We're going to start off with the annexation portion of the request first. And then, because this goes on to city council, it is a separate report. That's why staff has set it up like that, so that I can change it and it can go on to council. And then the subdivision and the PUD is reviewed by Planning Commission, does not go on unless it's appealed, as John had alluded to earlier with the special use permit that Tammy just got done with. So with that, we'll begin. So the first application is an annexation prior, zoning prior to annexation of 2.12 acres from County Ag Suburban to a requested R12 zoning in city limits. So the applicant is here. It is JBR Land Holdings LLC, and engineer Connie Kruger, she is also here as well. She will be providing the report following mine. So there is a decision point to be made with the annexation. Is should the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend adoption or rejection of the requested R12 zoning in conjunction with annexation of 2.12 acres from County Ag to City R12? And it's located at 3415 North 15th Street, which is located right here. So currently, the subject property is located in unincorporated area of the county and consists of one parcel that has a single-family dwelling on it. The subject site is 2.12 acres, and the area is relatively flat. The site is adjacent to city limits along its south and west property line, and the property is currently zoned Ag Suburban. And as part of the request, they are asking for R12. So in tandem with this request, they are requesting a PUD and a subdivision, as mentioned earlier. And we will hear all of those tonight separately. So this map right here shows city limits in the green. The yellow is the ACI. Those are areas that the city is anticipated to grow into over 20 years. That may or may not happen, but those are the limits as defined. And then the subject property is shown right here in this dashed black box here, 15th, along this edge, and then Lunsford Lane to the south. This is the map of the requested annexation survey. And then a zoning map. So as you can see, this is the request. This is the zoning within the city of Coeur d'Alene. This lighter green is R12, which is what they're asking for. They're also asking for a PUD. To the north was Burke Dale and Burke Dale North, which also requested this similar zoning as well as a PUD. This one is a little bit different. We'll get into that in the following hearing. So surrounding this site, there is an R12 that is to the west. And then, or R5 to the west, R12 to the south, and to the east. Kitty Corner across 15th is R17, with some R8 to the north of that. So this is the R12 district and what those permitted uses are principally. And as you can see here, duplex and single-family are part of that. But as noted, this is also part of a PUD, so that they have requested in the PUD to have a different product type, and we will get to that in the PUD as six complexes. a different product type and we will get that to that in the PUD as six pluses. So the first finding is B one. Before we get on to that, in the summary of facts, all public hearing notice requirements have been met for A two twenty-four. So by finding B one is that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This is the future land use map for the city of Coeur d'Alene in its entirety. So this is a city context. The subject property is right about here and it's mixed use low. So zooming into that area, you can see the this area right here is the mixed use low area in the future land use map and the subject property is outlined in black. So what is mixed use low? Give me a second here. So place types in the plan represent a form of future development as envisioned by the cities, the citizens of Coeur d'Alene. The place types will in turn provide the policy level guidance that will inform the city's development ordinances. Each place type corresponds to multiple zoning districts that provide a high level of detail and regulatory guidance on items such as height, lot size, setback, adjacencies and allowed use. And mixed use low places are highly walkable areas typically up to four stories. Development types are primarily mixed use buildings with retail restaurants on corners or along the entire ground floor frontage, but could also include townhomes and multifamily housing. Floors above a residential office or a combination of those uses. Multifamily residential development provides additional housing options adjacent to mixed use buildings. This place type is typically developed along a street grid that has excellent pedestrian and bicycle facilities with mid-block crossings as needed to provide pedestrian access. And then compatible zoning here listed is C seventeen, C seventeen L, NC and CC. And so for before we move on to the the goals and objectives that apply, I know this question is going to come up is how does this meet that mixed use requirement? And so in times past, planning commission as well as our attorneys that I've served under multiple attorneys have have taken the stance that if the request is less than what is allowed, that that is usually good enough to pass without changing the plan or having a different zone or, you know, having to go through extra hoops. So this request is less than a mixed use low, so I just wanted to to point that out. And so this is the map of the mixed use low, medium and high. And this right here is the the area of mixed use low. So transportation, you can see here, the the subject property is right down here. This purple is the bicycle lane. This is the the existing bicycle network right now. And then along Lunsford is a is a planned facility. You can see this is the walking network or sidewalks and and the multi-use paths and trails in the city of Coeur d'Alene. The blue is where they are currently and then city link routes in the city of Coeur d'Alene. There are three of them and then this is where that subject property is located. So there's a number of goals and objectives that are located in the comprehensive plan that speak to product type such as this, community and identity. That is citizens are well informed, responsive and involved in community discussions, environment and recreation. I'm hitting the highlights here. They're all in in your plan, so I don't have to read them all in one by one. Preserve and enhance the beauty and health of Coeur d'Alene's natural environment. Goal two is to provide diverse recreational options. In this case, it's tied to the open space that would be required, the ten percent open space. And then growth and development. Goal GD one is develop a mix of land uses throughout the city that balance housing and employment while preserving the qualities that make Coeur d'Alene a great place to live. And goal two, ensure appropriate high quality infrastructure to accommodate community needs and future growth. And then goal three is support the development of a multimodal transportation system for all users. All right. The next finding is B two and is that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. So we received feedback from city departments concerning stormwater streets, water, wastewater and fire. All of those are located on pages twelve and thirteen of the staff report. Suffice it to say that all of the feedback received from city staff said that there was no insurmountable hurdles in that the project could be served. I wanted to quickly point out, make sure I'm on the right finding, Chris Bozley's comment concerning streets is that the onsite sidewalk should be concrete rather than asphalt as it would be poorly defined across the frontages of the garage garages and is likely to be blocked by parked cars. Additionally, the proposed asphalt surface is more susceptible to concrete writing, heaving and other distort distortions resulting in accessibility issues. And so that is one of the conditions that come later in the report.
I could jump in with a question there on that. That's the one one now circled that I don't like a condition that says should. That kind of is an editorial comment. Is there, I'm going to throw out there that maybe the applicant, when I call them forward, can address whether that could read shall be concrete rather than should to tie that down a little bit, but.
Yes, I staff agrees with that. The more clear, the better.
Thank you.
Chair, I had a follow-on question that I think's about to come up, so I don't want to interrupt again. Something about forty half feet, something. I think that's your next stipulation on sidewalks, half of forty feet or something. I just could not, Chris has something in there for the next bullet down. It didn't make any sense to me. I was wondering if you could just clarify that.
Sure. So fifteenth street right of way is not wide enough to accommodate all of the public improvements that are needed. And so what he was saying is center line of that of fifteenth street over forty feet is what we need.
Okay, great.
That side of fifteen. So we need an additional ten feet from the.
Great, thanks, Sean.
For the.
Sure.
All right. So moving on to finding three B, we will get through all of these tonight, I promise. So that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not made it make it suitable for the request at this time. So the subject site is relatively flat with a tree area to the rear. The site is adjacent to fifteenth street along its eastern property line. There is a single family dwelling located on the eastern portion of the site. And then we do have some site photos that are provided shortly that show the existing conditions. As part of the as part of the request, they are required to provide two-foot contours with which the applicant did up here. It's a little bit tough to read, but this is one contour here and then staff used our GIS and provided five-foot contours to show how just how flat the site really, really is. It's it's quite flat out there. And so here are the site photos that I was just mentioning. So this is across the street from fifteenth looking into the subject property. This is that single family house that was mentioned here. This is looking towards the property to the south and then looking north along fifteenth street. This is where that ten feet would be requested from or required if it's annexed in. And then the public improvements would go in here, which are street trees and sidewalk. And then from the northern, the northeast corner of the property, this is the property to the north of the subject property. Okay, so this next photo is interior to the property, looking at the rear of the house towards fifteenth street, which is out here. And then this is to the rear of the property, looking south at some of the multifamily units that are on the other side of the fence. And then this is on Lunsford Lane, looking west. Single family house is the rear yard here and then multifamily housing abuts that moving west. So the next finding is finding B four. Is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character and or existing land uses. And so with traffic, along with streets comes traffic. And so as noted in finding B nine, the subject property is bordered by fifteenth street, which is a major collector street, but is being reclassified as a minor arterial through KMPO. This is this is all provided by Chris Bozley, city engineer. He had mentioned that through the ITE trip generation manual, that traffic from the four proposed residential lots is estimated to generate approximately sixteen trips in the AM peak hour and nineteen trips in the PM peak hour, as indicated by the twenty eighteen traffic counts. The fifteenth street experiences an average of about seven hundred and seventy PM peak hour trips. So that increase represents approximately two and a half percent increase during that peak hour. So as far as neighborhood character goes, there's a single family dwelling with accessory buildings on the subject site to the east across fifteenth street are multifamily apartments and duplex housing units. To the west are single family dwellings. There are existing residential uses that surround the site on all sides. This is a general land use map. So there are nineteen recommended annexation agreement conditions. And I had reached out to Randy and asked him, we have the same ones for both the PUD, the subdivision and the annexation. What do you recommend? And he said, let's put them in, all of them. And so that way there's, none of them get missed. Suffice it to say that a number of these are items that are policies of the city of Coeur d'Alene and are also reviewed at the time of permit. So I didn't want to list all nineteen out. They are in the staff report. They are on pages nineteen and twenty. The the ones that are important with the annexation are the ten feet of right of way as Mr. Koppis had mentioned along fifteenth street, that the onsite sidewalk shall be concrete rather than asphalt. And then for planning, they are required to create an HOA. The open space must be completed prior to recordation of the plat or bonded for. And all of these run concurrently, so they are dependent on each other. So if one fails, they all they would all fail. And an access utility easement over the private road would be required to follow or to allow for automobile circulation for all residents of the future vehicular connection north stub. So if you looked at that site plan, there was a stub that's shown here for future development with the idea at some point being able to loop the water for the water department, which provides better service for everyone. And so with that, the planning and zoning commission will need to consider this request for R twelve zoning in conjunction with annexation and make findings to recommend that the city council adopt the requested R twelve zoning with or without conditions to be included in the annexation agreement or reject the requested R twelve zoning. So there are three options there. Adopt R twelve with conditions, without conditions or reject R twelve. The findings worksheet is in your packet. So here's where we come to the fork in the road. Would you like to attempt to make those findings now or would you like staff to move on to the subdivision and PUD and do them all at once?
I think keep keep rolling, Sean.
Okay.
It all makes sense.
It'll all come together.
And a lot of this information is going to be very similar, if not exactly the same. So applicant and engineer is the same. The request, though, has changed. This is for subdivision and planned unit development on a two point one two acre property located at thirty-four fifteen north fifteenth street, would be commonly known as Juniper Ridge. So here is the subject property, fifteenth street, Lunsford. This is zoomed in so that you can see those two streets in the context of the neighborhood. And then the bird's eye aerial photo showing what it looks like at an angle with some three D element to it. So the decision point before planning commission tonight, there are two of them, is that a residential planned unit development that would allow for four townhome lots and two tracks and two, the subdivision, which is a four lot, two-tracked preliminary plat to be known as Juniper Ridge. Once again, the summary of facts, A one, all public hearing notice requirements have been met for for the items. And so we will move on to the just the PUD portion of this. So with a planned unit development review criteria, that it may only be proved if the proposal conforms to the following criteria to the satisfaction of the commission. And first is finding B one, is the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This should sound very familiar because it's exactly the same as the annexation. So I will not move through all of those, subject to say that is being considered to be brought into the city limit and that it is designated as mixed use low in the future land use map, which is here and we've already discussed. As well as the comprehensive goals and objectives, they are exactly the same, as well as the bicycle walking and city link routes for transportation. And then finding B two, I got to catch up on my report, so give me a second. The design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing usance on adjacent properties. So the site is generally flat and the western portion of the lot is covered with trees. There's a single family dwelling with accessory buildings on the subject site to the east across fifteenth street are multifamily apartments and duplex housing units. To the south, there are four multifamily units as well as single family dwellings. To the west are single family dwellings and it's surrounded on all sides by residential uses. There's no top topographical or other physical constraints that would make the subject property unsuitable for the proposed planned unit development. So this is their site plan. This is a private street that they have requested, as mentioned in the annexation, that didn't have this map. And that I was alluding to is the future connection to the north where planning is asking for an easement and then a fire department turnaround. There are ten percent open space here with a path and some improvements. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then four six pluses with parking out front. This purple line right here is the one where Chris said that it should be a concrete finish, but hopefully that would be a shall. So the generalized land use map and zoning maps are the same. You can see this one, there's multifamily units around duplexes across and the yellow is single family detached and then blue is civic type uses. With some mobile homes two blocks away. Same site photos, so the subject property looking into, looking north and south as well as from inside towards fifteenth and then down Lunsford, which is the cross street to the south. So finding B three is that the proposal is or is not compatible with the natural features of the site and adjoining properties. So very similar to the annexation. I provided the two-foot contours and the five-foot contours of the subject property, which represents the topography of the site, showing that it is relatively flat. Finding B four is the location, design and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing public facilities and services. Suffice it to say, these are the same comments from staff that are in the annexation, although they are split a little bit, they they fall under different findings in the PUD than they do in the annexation. But the ones that are pertinent to this finding can be found on pages eighteen and nineteen of the staff report. The reason why I provided the typical section for the private road here is this is where the five feet is of the pedestrian walkway that was proposed as an asphalt surface that should become or shall become concrete. So building elevations, part of the APUD is that there's a requirement for them to give staff architectural standards. And so these are the elevations that they would have to substantially adhere to. So it's directly from the front as well as from an angle of what that would look like as well as the sides and then the rear of each one of the six pluses that is proposed. So finding B five is that the proposal does or does not provide adequate private common open space as determined by the commission, no less than ten percent of gross land area, free of building streets, driveways or parking areas. The common open space shall be accessible to all users of the development. The common open space shall be accessible to all users of the development and usable for open space and recreational purposes. So this is a zoomed in portion of that tract A and B where this is the fire department turnaround. Tract B is the open space. Uh, they have provided a fenced area with a dog park, has a pet waste station. And then on each corner is a concrete pad with a one will have a bench and one will have a picnic table. Included with this also, I wanted to provide their proposed landscape plan where you can see where the the trees would be located throughout the site. This is uh, proposed as private open space. It would not be open to the public. So finding B six, we're getting there.
Sean.
Question, Sean.
Yes.
Question for you on that. When you, if you can go back a slide. When I look at uh, tract B, that doesn't look like ten percent of the whole. So have you guys done some kind of math to?
Yes, it is ten percent.
Alright, okay.
Yep. After they give the ten feet to the city, it's it's almost exactly ten percent.
Okay.
It's in their application. Thank you. Good, good question. Alright, finding B six is off street parking does or does not provide parking sufficient for users of the development. Um, I did give Connie a call about this one. We had a a discussion. These are all proposed as being two and three bedroom units, which requires two spaces per unit. And they are showing and have provided um, three spaces per unit. Each one would have a space in front of the sidewalk as well as a garage area. So parking in tandem. And then one additional space for uh, friends or family that come over. Um, so each one does have an extra stall over and above what the requirement is for city code. And finding B seven, that the proposal does or does not provide for an acceptable method of perpetual maintenance for all common property. This is part of the condition that planning had made, but per the applicant's narrative is that a property owners association will be established for the perpetual maintenance. Of all com- common infrastructure and property. So I put this blank slide in here to let everybody know that we are now moving on to the subdivision portion of the request. And so we will begin that now. So finding B one is that all of the general preliminary plat requirements have or have not been met as attested to by the city engineer. And Chris Bosley, the city's engineer has attested to that and has noted that all of the general preliminary plat elements are shown. On the preliminary plat. And this is a a copy of that preliminary plat. So finding B two is that the provisions for sidewalk, streets, alleys, rights of way easement, street lighting, fire protection, planting. Drainage, pedestrian and bicycle facilities and utilities are or are not adequate. And so you can see that uh, PUD finding B two and B four have listed these out. I provided that in the PUD showing the landscape as well as the open space for the planting. Um, there's also a note in here, and I can read it into the record, is that the condition for the dedication of ten feet along fifteenth street will provide enough area. To install public pedestrian sidewalk and space for street trees as required by streets and engineering and parks and urban forestry. Per the applicant's request, the continual continuous internal side. Sidewalk is proposed in front of the six pluses and connects both to the open space pathway as well as the public sidewalk. A street side linear swale, which also contains dumpsters is purported on proposed on the north side of. L- Lancy Street and bicycle racks will be required at the time of permitting per code. Um, suffice it to say also that the utilities are shown here. There's water and wastewater. The green and blue are. The blue is the water and the green is the wastewater.
I'm killing you, Sean. What's the red for on that last slide?
The red? That's a clear view corner. That's so people can see when they're they're leaving, making sure that there's nothing obstructing the.
While we're talking about that, those last two parking, I uh, we are standing at sixty three parking spaces over a required forty eight. Those two parking spots right as you would turn right, um, where the line of sight is would be tough spots. And if you're already over, why why put those two where they are most congested, hardest to get out? And you're backing into people and not being able to see what you're doing, what's coming in at you from the other side.
Yes, um.
The most easterly side.
City code does have a standard for that. And so the.
Yeah, this is an unbroken line of cars on the on the south side of that road. And I think it's just unpleasant. And also access, how do you maintain that rear? You've got one entry point maybe to get in if it's not parked solid to mow the lawn. And tackle that back back and side yards between buildings. I think the excessive parking is is detrimental. I would really look at that overage of parking and say, you know what, you gotta make it easier for the landscaper to get in there, maintain this property. And also snow storage. That's a long, narrow belly band. And the snow is going to end up on top of the trash units, on the bicycle racks, you know. I think that being heavy handed in parking is kind of detrimental to our street load and. You know, is it an abandoned truck? Is it a trailer? What the heck are we gonna leave there that they need that much parking? You know, we're on a nice bike route. We got bus routes there. I kind of look at that parking that they've given us. And say, hey, can we lose ten spots and be a better looking space?
And I'll let the the applicant respond to that comment.
Yeah.
Um, from the planning standpoint or from the city standpoint is I believe that was provided rather than on street parking. So that's that's where they made up the difference. Um, concerning how close the parking stalls are to fifteenth street. There is a standard and this is a little bit difficult to understand where the property line meets and where the actual city street is. That standard is is that no parking stall shall be closer than twenty feet from the back of curb. And so there's a substantial distance there. Um, but I I do get your point where when you get a lot of cars lined up in a row. You know, watching where everybody is moving all at once.
Or after school, trying to get out and in.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So finding B three. Two two lost here is that the proposed preliminary plat does or does not comply with all of the subdivision design standards contained in chapter sixteen point one five. And all of the subdivision improvement standards in chapter sixteen point four. Uh, requirements including any deviations approved through the PUD process. So that last little bit of language was added um, with conversations with legal. Because these are all tied together. And Chris Bosley, the city engineer did confirm that that has been vetted. So finding B four is that the lots proposed in the preliminary plat do or do not meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district, including any deviations approved through the PUD process. So um. Uh, yes and no. That's what a PUD is for. So they make requests such as private streets. You know, um, one of the things in R twelve is you're only allowed to build up to a duplex, but they're requesting a sixplex. Um, they did that uh, with without asking for a height increase. Normally a sixplex would be allowed to go up to forty five feet under. Our seventeen standards. They have kept that down to a residential standard, uh, which I think helps with the the neighborhood. Um, and suffice it to say that. Here, um, they've also said that in if R twelve is permitted, that the existing single family house would meet setbacks in the new lot. It may stay as construction happens on the other three lots and then ultimately be replaced replaced uh, with that last sixplex. And so there was a little bit I wanted to read here. So R twelve zoning district in conjunction with the PUD and annexation request requires that each uh, unit has a minimum thirty five hundred square feet of area within the project. Uh, which is above the typical standard of twenty five hundred square feet in an R seventeen. And the reason is is because the PUD may allow for dimensional and product type alterations, but it does not change the underlying zoning density. So they do meet an R twelve density uh, with this design. So I believe that is the. End of the staff report. The same nineteen proposed conditions for engineering, fire, planning, wastewater and water can be found on pages twenty eight, twenty nine of the staff report. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Um, your action alternatives, I'll read into the record real quick is planning and zoning commission will need to consider these two requests. And make separate findings to approve, approve with conditions, deny or deny without prejudice. And the findings worksheet is in your packet. Stand for questions.
Sean, good report. Uh, question, I'm not a realtor like Sarah. You know, since there's a PUD here in four different lots and whatnot, am I correct in assuming that there'd be? Twenty four units over four over the four lots, six times four, right?
Yes.
And those would be little kind of zero lot line. Individually owned homes, correct?
Um, the and.
Otherwise, why would you have a HOA? If they're rental, wouldn't this just be a re- a big rental complex?
It's a very good question. It's one for the applicant. They can be single ownership with six units each with separate ownerships of all six units. They could potentially condo it if they want.
So it could go either way. You could have four different apartment complexes in a common HOA.
Yes, yeah. It leaves a little bit of flexibility there.
Question number one. The other question for you, uh, I can't help but to ask this, but uh, you know, uh. This is a property that really belongs to needs, should be annexed into the city as good business practice. Uh, I'm asking your opinion that. Is the street out out front is repaired and maintained by the city? The first responders that come from fire station three or first cop car coming to that property is going to be city of Coeur d'Alene. Uh, the park right around the corner that the folks now might go visit. You know, they're utilizing all these city services, but they're in the county. I think you have called these donut holes, but uh. This really belongs in the city, does it not? You know, is it is good business practice?
Uh, my professional opinion, and I've worked in a couple of other states, is that and they have this codified as part of state code is when. A city envelops a property around all four sides that it's automatically annexed. That doesn't happen in Idaho. There's a little bit more freedom there, I guess, but at some point it would come into city limits as the anticipation for those very reasons is that they. They um, you know, they they have city services and they use those city services and they're kind of inside the city, but not.
Thank you. Just wanted to kick that around a little bit. Uh, question, uh, Commissioner Ward.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Sean. I have a clarification on the plat. I really can't tell what I'm looking at. Do the front lot lines for these houses on the five lots, do they, does the plat actually go across the street? Or does it terminate somehow at the front of the building?
It terminates at the southern end of Laney.
So the the streets, the sidewalk, the parking, everything is within each lot.
So um. If you can see where my kind of a funny.
Yeah.
Shape there, but the the lots are located just to the south. So that's where the property line is. So tract A has this shape. It might be easier to see here. This is where tract A is. That is the street and the fire department turnaround and then the future connection. Tract B is the open space and then each one of these is a buildable lot for a sixplex.
So.
Thank you very much.
Similar question. Are tract A and B owned by the HOA? And then and then those tax, you know, that property tax on those and things would be shared through the HOAPs?
That's considered common space. Um, one quick thing before we allow the applicant to come up is. In my anticipation of all of this, I jumped right over what their deviation requests were. So I would really like to get those into the record before I get done. So first is they to allow for multifamily construction product type, uh, six pluses, a private road instead of a public road within the boundaries of the PUD. Hundred and twenty feet of lot frontage on the private road and fifty foot minimum frontage on a public right of way. And that's per lot, per buildable lot. And reduction of the required right of way width for the private road from fifty five to thirty five. And that is in anticipation of the parking in front of the units rather than parking on the street. And then a five foot wide asphalt pedestrian walkway that we have talked about to no end. So we'll we'll let that one lie.
Thank you. Uh, other questions, Sean?
One that we kind of went through a. Hammerhead, this would be a hammerhead kind of set up for the fire turnaround versus a cul-de-sac at the end. Came up in a PUD last year, um, or earlier this year. Or does this meet the require, is it close enough to the end?
The the issue with that one was that was the second iteration of that.
Right.
That was proposed as a public street. The public street can't have a. Can't have a dead end there.
Yep. This one has been reviewed by the fire department.
I was just wondering, because this is a private street, we can allow for that, but not on a public street. Was the difference between the two?
That one I would look to streets and engineering on to give the definitive answer.
Cause I, we had, I mean, we had similar issues with the snow removal. And I think this street is going to have the same.
Challenges.
Issues that we discussed before, so.
Other questions to Sean? Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the applicant Connie Kruger, obviously indicated on the sign up sheet here in favor and uh, plans to address us. And for the control room, uh, we're all learning here. Um, the applicant won't won't be subject to the three minute uh, timer. So. Uh, could you uh, please uh, give us your name and city?
My name's Connie Kruger and I um, live in Post Falls and work in Coeur d'Alene.
And do you solemnly swear and or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Proceed.
Um, well, Sean has covered um, quite a few things. And so some of my presentation will probably reiterate some of what he's already covered. Um, but I will also try to answer some of the questions that have been uh, brought up today in your discussion too, as we're going through this. Um, so first of all, um, I thought it might be nice to just start with a slide on some of the key items that we see with this property and with this development. Um, where we think, you know, either it's a good fit or it's consistent um, with the code. Uh, so again, we're requesting annexation with R twelve zoning, a PUD and a preliminary plat. Um, as you saw, this property is flat. There are no wetlands, no creeks, uh, really no environmental concerns with the property. Um, it's also located in the area on fifteenth street where there are a lot of other multifamily. As well as some kind of limited commercial support services that are in that neighborhood. Um, there's commercial down on Best Avenue. We have, I think, a new market, um, an outdoor market that's coming over into that neighborhood. Um, so we kind of see this structure that um, the community support structure that's developing or developed in the area. Um, also community services. You have fire, you have police. You're not out in a remote um, area out on the fringe of the city. Um, we are also located on uh, fifteenth street, which that is as Sean has talked about, um, being reclassified by Campio. Um, from a major collector to minor arterial. So with that, um, it is capable of carrying these traffic volumes and the city engineer has evaluated the project. He's looked at traffic counts. And um, didn't propose any type of mitigation related to the traffic that we'll have. There are various agency standards that we've talked about um, tonight and the owner is familiar with all of those and um, either can or will comply with those. And all of our engineering and our building code standards will be evaluated in the future. So when we come in with our construction plans and our building permits. Um, we have other codes that we will comply with. And again, we don't see any type of an issue with that. Um, we do comply with the planned unit development and the subdivision standards. We've requested just a very minimal amount of deviations. Um, so we're not, you know, proposing something that's extremely out of the box. We've talked a little about HOA and city utilities and services that are in the area. And um, the owner will also be extending these utilities and the road improvements at at his cost. And outside of that, we'll also pay any kind of taxes or fees or um. You know, impact fees, whatever it may be, that will help to kind of offset some of the impacts that we have to the community. So we've talked a little bit about the location. We probably don't need to hit on that. But again, a project description overview, again, we have four lots. Um, with one six unit town home building on each lot. And so with those town home buildings, the town homes will be built under the um, IRC, which is the International Residential Code. And so those will be built as standalone, even though they're they have a common wall. They will be built to be sold separately as units if the owner. They will be built to be sold separately as units if the owner desires to do that. So I think that was one of the questions that came up, is how do they work with zero lot line setbacks? They're constructed together, they're firewallled, but they're constructed under the townhome standards so that, which treat them like single-family homes with adequate fire protection between each one. We also have the open space tract and the road tract, and there was a question earlier on, the open space, and Sean surmised correctly, we're almost exactly at 10% of the required open space. And then we talked a little bit about the parking spaces. So one will be in the garage, and then we have two external spaces. And I did talk to the owner a little bit about the parking, and we do have a similar facility that was constructed up in Hayden. He did say that having that extra parking is desirable to tenants and owners, but I thought there was some good discussion that occurred around that. So just that's what he's experienced with outside. So this is the similar project. In fact, our building plans mirror this, which is up in Hayden. So these are called the Buttercup Townhomes. And so I thought it'd be good for you to just kind of see what it is that we're building here. So with these, you can see that we have the recessed covered entry point. We also have a covered patio at the rear, and we have a rear backyard that is 30 feet on the units. We'll have three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath end units, and then we'll have two-bedroom and two-and-a-half-bath interior units. So for each six-unit building, you'll have the larger units on the end and then the smaller units that are in the middle. We also have that internal garage space. The kitchen living areas are going to be on the ground floor. We'll have a bedroom upstairs, and these will range from about 1,300 to 1,500 square feet. We also will have landscaping in the backyard that we've talked about a little bit. So this just kind of shows you what the buildings look like. You can see the living room and kitchen. This is on the center units and the bedrooms that are up on the upper floor. So it just kind of gives you a nice little idea of what those look like. And here's the end unit. So very similar, just a little bit bigger. One of the things that Sean and I talked about was, you know, kind of like an attractive look to the building out on 15th Street. And so with that, you can see with these side elevations that we do have windows, we have doors, we have things. So it's not just a blank wall on the building. Here's the front elevation, which we've seen a little bit of, and then there's the rear elevation with those covered patios. As to the standards that we're proposing, we are proposing a front yard of 25 feet, code is 20. Our interior side yards are 10-plus feet, and code requires 5 to 10 feet. Our street side yard is 15, and code requires 10. And then we have a rear yard of 30, and code requires 25. So this is the open space, and we've talked about this already, but I've just included a little bit of a depiction here on what the dog park area will likely look like. It will be fenced. Also in this, we've placed a little more green around the fire turnout there. And if you look at the open space of track B, it doesn't include the fire turnaround, but we likely will landscape up and around that. So a question came up earlier about, you know, snow storage. We will be storing snow during the winter. It will be pushed to the north end of the road up into the stormwater swale. And then we'll actually have some additional area in here around that turnaround to be able to store some snow also. So that area immediately around that is not included in track B. And you can kind of see that here with this little polygon. So again, we would landscape that. It could be used for snow storage, but it's not part of that overall 10% requirement. We will be bringing eight-inch sewer mains into the project, manholes and service lines to the buildings, the same with the water lines. We also will have fire hydrants internal to the site, so you can see one out here on 15th, and then we have another one up here near the turnout. We'll have a mailbox cluster, and we also focused a lot in this project on providing for lighting. So in the subdivision plan, you'll see the little lighting symbol. And so we're trying to provide some additional lighting in and around track B and the areas that will be used by the public as well as out on the street. Our access aisles will be, it'll be a 24-foot wide asphalt drive aisle. And our parking stalls will be nine foot by 20 feet. Might even be 10. I've got to look at the plan again. So 12 stalls per building, so two external per townhome unit. We've got the turnaround, and also the city requested that we put in that additional asphalt to the north so that if the property to the north of us ever develops, that we can have some additional circulation. And part of the logic behind that is the city is really looking at, in the area, probably trying to kind of consolidate existing approaches, things like that. If you look at an aerial photo of our property, we have two approaches out onto 15th, and so we will go down to one, and then the one that we will have will align a little bit more with Mary Avenue across the road. And then this provides for that additional internal circulation if the property to the north of us develops. We'll also have no parking signs that are out on the north end of the driveway and the five-foot sidewalk, and that will be located between the front of the townhome buildings and the head of the asphalt parking area. There was a question, I believe, about property lines, and where the property lines will be is, the property lines will actually be near the back of the parking area, or the outside parking. And so with that, if you take into account the 20-foot length of the parking space, the five-foot sidewalk, the townhome structures are set back 25 feet from their north property line, is how that works. And it's very difficult to see, but if you were to look at this concept, this sidewalk, the property line would be 20 feet back here, the parking stall. So you can actually see the property line demarcated here in this graphic. There's a little, it's written sideways, but you can see it out there. We will also be constructing improvements on 15th Street, and so we'll be putting in a concrete curb and gutter, a concrete sidewalk, park strips and swales, and the street trees. And we've talked a little bit about these other approaches and traffic. Sean hit on the deviations that we're requesting. So again, we're requesting a private road instead of a public road just within the boundaries of the PUD. We want to reduce the required right-of-way for a private, for the private road from a public right-of-way, which would be 55 feet, down to 35 feet. And on that 35 feet, we will have an easement that allows for, I think that somebody brought up, you know, emergency responders, other utility workers. It would allow for all of those service agencies to be able to enter in and access the property. We'll have the, and here we say that we're requesting the five-foot asphalt pedestrian walkway instead of a concrete sidewalk. We do know that the city engineer has recommended that that be concrete, and the owner has reviewed that condition and is accepting of that. They're fine with that. And in fact, the project that was done in Hayden, if you look at the photo that I showed you, actually has a concrete sidewalk in front of the buildings. And so we're requesting 120 feet of lot frontage in lieu of 50-foot on a private road, in lieu of 50 feet of minimum frontage on a public right-of-way. And then another important factor is we're requesting townhome structures, and that's part of why we're doing a PUD also is to be able to have that type of a structure on the property. I thought it might be good to hear a little bit about the construction phasing. So again, I know some of this is, you know, pretty intuitive, but we'll be clearing, grubbing, and doing the site grading. And that would be one phase unless we just leave that little area around the home alone. And the owner hasn't yet made decisions on that. We would then construct the utilities and the private driveway, the 15th Street frontage improvements, and any of the site amenities. So that would be done at one time, and then follow that with the construction of the townhome buildings. And again, we may retain that home on the east until a later phase, or we may decide to do it all at one time. But we just thought we would lay that out to be clear as to what our intent was when we came before you tonight. So the permitting that we need to have will be a combined, it's a combination of everything you've heard about tonight, planned unit development, annexation, preliminary plat. Then we'll have additional permitting or review for our engineered plans for the subdivision and really the PUD infrastructure. Then we'll file a final plat application, and then after the structures are built, well, we'll survey the structures while they're built, and then we'll file a townhome plat application to establish each unit on an individual townhome lot. We do think that these units, the smaller units, I know there's sometimes questions about affordable housing and things like that. We think that the smaller unit will probably go for about 325 to 350, and the larger unit probably would be more in the 350 to 375 realm. And again, the owner has experience with this product type, but there are also other similar projects in the area, and those are some of the current prices that are out there on those products. So the comprehensive plan has already been hit on, and as the applicant, we, you know, we have to show how we're consistent with the comprehensive plan, the goals and policies. There's a lot of information that we put into our narrative on that. There's a lot of information in the staff reports. I don't want to hit on all of it. So just very briefly, I'm just going to speak to this, and that is, here, we're in this mixed-use low-place type. And I just highlighted some of the key words, that it can also include townhomes and multifamily housing, and then multifamily residential development that provides additional housing options. So with the city's latest comprehensive plan, this is what they wanted to see in that mixed-use low-place type. There was a discussion that, or Sean raised some points that we're actually developing a little less intensively. So some of the types of zone districts that are encouraged in this mixed-use low-place type are commercial, and specifically like the C-17 zone. And again, we're coming in with an R-12. We think it's more appropriate for the mid-block location where we're at. And most of the commercial types of development that are occurring in this 15th Avenue corridor are really happening a little bit to the south, down on Best Avenue. We're seeing a little bit more of that activity down in that area. So again, we're mid-block, and we're surrounded by quite a few different types of land uses that are really more residential in nature. With that, there were some points made about this being a little more appropriate for the city than for county. And so with that, just touching on the point that the current zoning is agricultural suburban in the county. And so in County, Agus Suburban Zone is a zone district that is suitable for residential, really more of a rural residential lifestyle. There's a two-acre minimum lot size, and small-scale agricultural uses. So great for some of the areas that are out and around the city, but generally, this is not the pattern of development that we see in the city. So without a rezone or without the zoning and annexation, this property is held until it's annexed into a rural or agricultural land use, because you have to abide by the zoning of the county. So with R-12, again, this is intended as a residential use that permits housing types of densities of not greater than 12 units per gross acre. So we really were to achieve that. And then further, it goes on to talk about the areas of the city that are suitable for that, and they're really areas where you have, you know, the ability to handle the traffic. You don't have environmental constraints, all the things that we've already hit on tonight. I, this land use slide, I've provided this because 15th Street is an interesting area. As you drive north on 15th Street, there are many, many structures in the area that are duplexes, multifamily. And if you really take a look here, as you start to move up right about here, where you really start to transition more into these established residential neighborhoods that are the more traditional four or five units per acre. But basically, you know, and this over here is, you know, all, I think this is R-17 or whatnot over in that area. But as you move from here down toward I-90, we see that role diversification land uses that are happening in this area. So we think it's a, it's a good fit with the comprehensive plan, and it's a good fit with the type of development that we see in the area. So with that, the standards of approval are all captured in the staff analysis. We have also tried to address them to the degree that we can in our narrative that we've provided, and we do believe that we, we do appear to meet all the standards. We have reviewed all the 19 recommended conditions, and the owner has reviewed each one of those and is in acceptance of each of those conditions. So with that, I can respond to any questions. I do want to clarify one thing. I am the planner for the project. We actually do have an engineer who's working on this too, and he's here tonight. So if you want to know specifics of how deep the manhole will be or something like that, then I'll bring him up, and he can speak to that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Questions to the applicant? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. It's very nice. Good, great presentation. I really have no problem at all with the annexation of the zoning. I do have questions on the site plan, however, if you don't mind. First of all, the price you indicated was really good to hear, but what kind of square footage are these units?
The units range from 1,300 to 1,500, and those are kind of rough numbers. They're a little above 13 and slightly below 15.
A couple, a couple other things if I could.
Sure.
I believe it's at the northeast corner you come out of the site. And there are 24 units here? I think possibly 48 cars, assuming everyone has two. At the northeast corner, where you come out onto 15th, what is the offset between there and Mary Lane, which is the road on the opposite side of the street? It looks to me like potential traffic hazard right there.
Yeah, there is a little bit of an offset. We did have several pre-application meetings with the city, and so the city engineer did encourage us to locate our approach on the north end to try to make that as close to Mary as possible while being on our own property, rather than coming in on the south end of the property. But you're right, there is a little bit of an offset.
Do you know what the actual offset is, 50 feet, 200?
I don't, and I'm not sure if Merle has evaluated that or not, but if.
Okay, okay. A couple other things if I could. On the north side, we're going to have dumpsters, right?
Yes.
And how, how many are we talking about? I mean, does it basically invalidate anything on that side of the street because the dumpsters occupy all the space?
No. In fact, you can see here that we have a few identified. So we have one here, and we have one here. We have worked with the, with the waste removal company and have conferred with them, and they're fine with the plan for what we have. And then from a stormwater perspective, it's, it will be included in all the engineering calculations, but it's pretty minimal. You can just see by the area.
Okay. And we've talked a bit about the sidewalk. And I understand now it's going to be concrete as opposed to asphalt. But I want to know, is that a sidewalk curb and gutter? Because there's parking all along there, and they'd be backing over a curb if that's the case.
Yeah, so let me show you the, so this here is the typical section for the road. And so with that, you can kind of see that this is an at-grade concrete sidewalk, and it would slope basically down to the north. And then this would be the swale that runs along the north end of the property. So the majority of our stormwater will run that direction, and there's no, there's nothing that we would be backing over and doing that.
But the sidewalk and asphalt would basically be at the same level as the driveway, is that right?
It would be, or we could possibly, we could raise that. It just, I think that we showed it that way because we were requesting an asphalt deviation. But if the city wants that raise, we could do that. The other thing too that we can do in cases like that is we can put curb stops if there is a concern about, you know, like driving. If there is a concern about, you know, like, driving, you know, into structure.
Yeah, thank you. Something else, you know, along Fifteenth Street, particularly on the east side, more so than the west, there are a series of developments like this. Twenty, thirty houses, all on a dead-end street, basically, private drive, with no interconnection. I noticed you were showing the possibility of a connection. Is that for utilities, or is there some intent to try to have an actual physical driveway connection at some point with the property to your, to yourself?
So, the, what the city has requested is, they have requested that we establish this additional asphalt apron for connectivity to the north. To the south, they are not requiring connectivity. This would be our fire turnaround.
Right.
So, if there wasn't a connectivity requirement, this little piece up in here would not be in our plans. It would just be strictly the fire department's turnaround.
But if that never materializes, this is essentially the same as the others I mentioned. You have twenty-four units on a dead-end street. They all get in or out only off of Fifteenth Street. There'd be no other access, no cross-connecting streets, right?
Correct, yeah, until that property the north develops.
I have one, I know on the, I think it was like the phasing slide maybe that you had, so I guess right now we're dividing it into four, four lots with a couple common area ones, and then, then you would divide them into individual units? Is that the intent?
Yeah.
Instead of condo plotting it as it is now?
Yeah, so condo plotting and townhome plotting are really similar to each other, and so when you plat for a condo or for a townhome, what you do is you, you usually will pour the foundation, and then you survey in the external edges of each unit, and then, so you'll have the plat that we're talking about tonight with the four lots and the two common space, the tracks. And then we'll come along with a subsequent action after we go under construction. We'll survey those, those corners of each unit, and then we'll file a townhome plat, and that legally creates each unit as real property with the ground underneath it.
Yeah, but do we, does that come back to us, Hillary? I guess that's, so it doesn't? And there's no way to do that with part of this?
It administrative process.
And there's not a way to do that with this process to ensure that that happens later, and that they're, we're just kind of trusting that that's going to happen later?
Right, and I don't, they don't need to necessarily do the condo or townhouse plat. They still are going to be subject to creating the HOA and having the common area maintenance and all of that.
Right, I just, I really appreciate the individual ownership of the units, because that allows them to be affordable, instead of sixplexes, which aren't really affordable to most people, you know, that they can own each unit, but then we're not getting that far tonight, you know? So, I didn't know if there was a way to have that, you know, kind of memorialized, or we're just going to hope it's going to happen, you know, down the road? Because I do think that's a characteristic of yours, that makes it affordable and a place where somebody can, you know, buy their first place.
So, maybe a little more information on that. If, the city requires us to submit building plans, and they're really a little more concerned about, you know, maybe the look of the outside and things like that, but what we have submitted is something that we've already built, which is a townhome. And so, if you look at the building plans themselves, they're actually designed to that. And so, that's why we're just, you know, in this presentation that we're doing, we're, you know, we're like, this is what we're building, because we've already done it, and that's what the owner wants to do. I think, you know, what Hillary is saying is there's nothing in the zone district that requires us to have that separation, but, you know, that, that is what we are planning to do, and for the owner, there's a good, there's, it's a good investment, because he might hold on to the units now and decide to sell some later. He may sell a building, he may, you know, whatever it may be. But if they're constructed as a townhome, it allows you that option to move them forward that way. And so, the big thing is, is making sure that we set up our HOA documents in a way that really governs that from the beginning. So, that's one of the things we'd be focused on.
No, I appreciate that, I just, but, there's not a way for us to make sure that that happens, except for maybe a development agreement, right?
We're just talking through, so it's really up to the applicants, because there's nothing in our code that says they have to have individually, have them be available for sale individually. So, I think they wanted that ultimate flexibility, where they'd probably like to sell them to individuals in the future, but they may want to rent them for a while or hold on to them, so.
Oh, yeah, I don't think they have to sell them. I'm just saying that they're individually platted. We're look, not looking at the individual plating, and we can't require that either. That's, I just want to clarify, because that's another step, but that's not something that we're looking at tonight.
That's correct.
Other questions to the applicant?
I do, just a quick comment, a more comment. I know this is going to get through the building department eventually. I'm going to speak on behalf of all the disabled people that cannot and do not have accommodation in our city. Curb cuts, raised stoops, all those things that make it hard, door widths, bathroom accessibility. I think, number one, you have to meet a standard for parking, and so maybe those need to be in that gap between the buildings, so that they can easily get into whatever building they need to. We can also get our fire hoses in there easier. We can get our lawn maintenance in there easier. Think in terms of usability and accessibility across multiple disciplines, including the disabled, the wheelchair-bound, the lawnmower guy who's on a ride-on, and so I want to go back to that, just, we really need to address more accessible dwellings and more ADA parking. And it doesn't just mean that you're in a wheelchair, it's, there's disabilities of many kinds. So, I just want to plant that seed.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You'll get a chance for rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, on the sign-up sheet, I have Merrill Van Hockter, Van Hockton? Okay, did I, okay. In favor, does wish to testify?
Not at this moment.
Not? Thank you for that. Available for questions. Next is Brad Hobson, in favor, indicates do not wish to testify. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just available for questions.
Thank you.
If I can.
Okay, we got to swear in. Name and city for the record.
Brad Hobson, living in Coeur d'Alene.
Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, please.
So, I've got like a head cold, so.
Three minutes, please.
Yeah, yeah. Having a hard time, like, I can't hear what Connie's saying, you know, from behind, and what you were, so, so what were you, you were alluding to, the question was whether we were going to condo plat and sell the units or keep them?
Just that they would be individually owned. So, we, so we tonight are only looking at the four larger parcels, but then in the, in the description here was another step, and so I was just asking more about that, because I appreciate that they can be individually owned. I think that provides a housing stock that we don't have a lot of, so.
Well, I'd like to speak to the affordable housing part. So, my, my partner, he's a doctor and one of the founding owners of Northwest Specialty Hospital. So, we work with Rick Rasmussen, the CEO at the hospital, and we do offer discounts to healthcare and first responders, and, you know, we built that place in Hayden, and we've rented a share of those to the medical, the healthcare workers. So, we, and, and like, and it's all about, and like, my partner and I, we kind of got into building these homes, because, you know, they're having staffing shortages, big time, because people can't afford to live here. So, that's kind of what, that was kind of like what spurred our whole initiative to build these multifamily homes, these buildings, so I just wanted to add that. Like, we are all about affordable housing and helping the healthcare workers.
Thank you much. No one else on the sign-up sheet? Does anyone else wish to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I am going to ask for rebuttal, if you feel you need to share anything or else, okay? With that, public testimony is closed, and I would ask the commission if they would list, wish to discuss this and/or make some motions and findings. I open the floor. Commissioner Koppus.
Chair, just got a procedural question, it's new to me, but Ms. Tracy, you'd added a comment, public comment that was written in, I think? It was from a Al McViddle? Is that, is that right? Yeah, and I don't know if that needs to be addressed here or not, but I'm just curious on the process with this. I know we got it. I don't know if everyone else needs to get it, or if, how that works in the calculus. Hillary, can you address that?
Was that the one included in the packet? So, it was posted online, so it was available for the public to see that.
So, good, okay, thank you.
But thank you for bringing that up, because that's true sometimes.
Food for thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, motion? Commissioner Ward?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I mean, we really need housing in this town, and we need something that falls into what maybe classified as affordable, and I appreciate the comments about trying to help certain individuals within the, within the community. My concern is that we cannot be granting approvals that in effect are a detriment to zoning development. I really feel this site plan, although I don't object to what you're trying to do, the site plan itself is overly utilization of the property. It's just not well-laid out. I think the traffic is a problem. I think the parking in front is going to have neighbors fighting with each other, but I guess down the road, that's, that's your concern, but I just feel like the site plan could do some more work, that's all.
Other discussion? Commissioner Luttrell?
I, yes, one of my issues, you've heard me speak before, is planned unit development, and in this case, annexation to a degree. And we have code, building codes here and so forth, that the property owner can elect to follow, or they can elect to ask for a planned unit development where there's some modifications of that, which I view as an exchange of values. They have a value for that property, they can, their value can be improved by making certain modifications through the planned unit development process. The city has certain values also, and I would encourage us to have our values be considered during plan, when a PUD comes before us. And one of our values is affordable housing. Now, I'm going to support this, but I'm putting forward, I guess, a challenge to us as a commission, I think it's to us, is to look at this exchange of values and see if we can identify the values that the city will receive commensurate with the values that the property owner receives. Now, I'm not talking about dollar values, I'm talking about values to our code, to our strategic plan, comprehensive plan. I don't know how we do this, but if we have a mind to, we can. We've had a lot of discussion tonight on affordable housing. We've had things come before us before, where a couple people and units have, PUDs have agreed to certain pricing of the apartments. That was a movement forward, but I think, I challenge us to, to look at the, how we can, we as a city can help our values as we are helping the values of the property owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Sarah?
I'm willing to make a motion if somebody's ready for it.
I, I think before that, I would, I would jump in and say, I appreciate what Commissioner Ward has said. This is not perfect. I think it's similar to a number of similar ones that we've approved recently, and, you know, it's kind of weighed, in my mind, yeah, it's not, not perfect, it's, it's one way in, one way out, the circulation could be better, but I think the overarching good for the community in the form of a house that might shake out at three fifty, three and a quarter, or something like that, is that kind of missing middle kind of stuff we talk about. And when we went back to the comp plan and had that game where we put, you know, where should the, the higher-density housing go, that's exactly where we landed with that, so please proceed, if you would.
Okay, I'm going to double-check my order. Annexation, then PUD, then subdivision. Okay. Okay.
Bear with us.
Bear with us, we got like ten pages to read, so. This matter, coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission on November twelfth, 2024, to consider A two dash twenty-four, a request for zoning prior to annexation of two-point-two acres from County Ag Suburban to City Residential R twelve. The applicant, Connie Kruger. The owner, JBR Land Holdings. The location, thirty-four fifteen North Fifteenth, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, eight-three-eight-one-five. Section A, the findings of fact, the planning commission finds the following facts, A one through A nine, to have been established on a more-than-probable-than-not basis, as shown on the record, before it on the testimony presented in the public hearing. And I don't need to read all these, right? Okay, so these mostly required to the notice requirements, and the way we've conducted our hearing tonight. Let me see. The staff identified comprehensive plan goals and objectives for the particular consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission will determine if there are other applicable goals and objectives to support the decision from the attached comprehensive plan goals and objectives. Two I'd like to highlight that I think fit pretty well in this one would be GD one-point-one. Under the main goal of GD one, develop a mix of land uses throughout the city that balance housing and employment while preserving qualities that make Coeur d'Alene a great place to live. GD one-point-one, achieve a balance of housing types, price points, including affordable to meet the city's needs. And then GD one-point-four, to increase pedestrian walkability and access within commercial development. And then this would include the added Fifteenth Street improvements that increase the walkability. The comprehensive, let's see, sorry. The comprehensive plan is a guide for annexations and land use decisions. The, and the future land use map, in conjunction with the goals and policies, shall be used by the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a recommendation on zoning in conjunction with annexation. And then these go to describe additional characteristics of the property. Do I need to read all these? No, okay. Based with the foregoing findings of facts, and the planning commission makes the following conclusions of law, that the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies, that public facilities are available and adequate for the proposed use, that the physical characteristics do make it suitable for their request at this time, and that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood in regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing land uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission, pursuant to the foregoing findings of facts and conclusions of law, has determined that requesting zoning does comply with the required evaluation criteria, and recommends to the city council to adopt the R twelve zoning with the following conditions to be included in the annexation agreement. Do I need to read all the conditions?
No, you just referred to the fact that there are nineteen conditions.
Okay, there are nineteen conditions that include engineering, fire, planning, wastewater, and water. They can be found in the staff report.
Commissioner McCracken, are you wanting to change the one, condition to shall, the condition, the condition number two for the concrete?
And condition number two, we will recommend that they shall be concrete rather than asphalt. And I motion to adopt with conditions.
So, that's a motion by McCracken for recommendation, recommendation to council, approval of A two dash twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Koppus? Roll call, please, Tracy.
Ward.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
McCracken.
Yes.
Koppus.
Yes.
Are you going to proceed with the PUD?
I'm going to proceed with the PUD.
Thank you.
Yep. This matter, coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission on November twelfth, 2024, to consider P V three dash twenty-four, planned unit development known as Juniper Ridge. Applicant, JBR Holdings. Owner, Connie Kruger. Location, thirty-four fifteen North Fifteenth Street, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, eight-three-eight-one-five. The finding of, the findings of fact, the planning and zoning commission finds that the following facts, A one through A eleven, have been established on a more-than-probable-or-not basis, as shown in the record before. as shown in the record before it, and on the testimony presented in the public hearing. I would also like to highlight a couple of conditions that are identified in the comprehensive plan under sections, they're, they're the same, GD 1. Develop a mix of land uses throughout the city that balance housing and employment while preserving the qualities that make Coeur d'Alene a great place to live. GD 1.1, achieving a balance of housing product types and price points, including affordable housing, to meet the city's needs. And GD 1.4, increase pedestrian walkability and access within commercial development. Let's see, sorry. The conclusions of law, based on the foregoing findings of fact, the planning commission makes the following conclusions of law. That the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies, that the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties, that the proposal is compatible with the natural features of the site and adjoining properties, that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by existing public facilities and services, that the proposal does provide an adequate common open space area, as defined by the commission, no less than 10% gross area, land area, free of buildings, streets, driveways, and parking areas. The common area open space shall be accessible to all users of the development and usable for open space and recreational purposes. That the off-street parking does provide parking sufficient for the users of the development, and that the proposal does provide an acceptable method for perpetual maintenance of the common property. The planning commission pursuant to the foregoing findings, findings of facts and conclusions of law has determined that the PUD does comply with the required evaluation criteria and should be approved with conditions, including the amended condition number two. And approved with conditions.
Thank you. A motion to, a motion by McCracken to approve PUD-3-24 with conditions noted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Koppus? Roll call, please.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Fleming?
No.
McCracken?
Yes.
Koppus?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Last one?
This matter coming, coming before the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 12th, 2024, to consider S4-24, a request for approval of a four-lot, two-track preliminary plat known as Juniper Ridge. The applicant is Connie Krueger. The owner is JBR Land Holdings. Location, 3415 North 15th Street, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the facts following A1 through A5 have been established on a more than probable than not basis, as shown on the record before the testimony presented in the public hearing. And the conclude. And then I want to just highlight in this one, the planning staff has reviewed the applicable zoning district and anticipated R12. That does have to go to council for approval, but I just want to highlight that in there for the lots to be proposed in the preliminary plat. Subject to approval by the requested PUD deviations and the annexation in conjunction with the zoning request by city council, the lots would meet the minimum standard of code. Based on the foregoing findings of fact, the planning and zoning commission makes the following conclusions of law. All the preliminary plat requirements have been met, as attested by the city engineer. The proposed, the provision for sidewalks, streets, alleys, rightways, easements, street lighting, fire protection, planting, drainage, pedestrian and bicycle facilities are adequate. That the proposed preliminary plat does comply with all of the subdivision design standards contained in Chapter 16.15 and all of the subdivision improvement standards contained in Chapter 16.40, requirements including any deviations approved through the PUD process. The lots proposed in the preliminary plat do meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district to be approved by council, including deviations, or if approved by council, I guess, including any deviations approved through the PUD process. The Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to the foregoing findings of fact and conclusions of law has determined that the proposed preliminary plat does comply with the required evaluation criteria. Is it with conditions?
Yes.
With conditions.
Okay. Thank you. A motion by McCracken?
With conditions, we, we have it, it should be approved with conditions. With conditions and approved with conditions.
Thank you. So that is a motion by McCracken to approve S-4-24 with conditions noted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Koppus? Roll call, please.
Fleming?
No.
McCracken?
Yes.
Koppus?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Thank you. So the, that as a package deal goes to council to be heard with these recommendations. Do we know when that would go to council?
We're looking at the second meeting in December.
Thank you very much, okay. With that, it's going, it's after eight, we've been at this for a while. Nod your head if, if you are in favor of like a eight, eight-minute break? Eight minutes. Control room will give us a one-minute warning, thank you, eight minutes. November 12th, Planning and Zoning Meeting back to order. And the next item up is Amendment Number Five for Minor Modifications to Development Areas Eight, Eleven, and Twenty at the Atlas Waterfront Planned Unit Development. Our presenter for, for staff is Hillary Patterson. And guess what? You're not held to three minutes.
Good, well, thank you.
You can go as long as you want.
Thank you, I'm going to go a little longer this week. I will try and limit it, though.
Thank you. Proceed.
shrink it down, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is Atlas Waterfront, PUD Amendment Number Five. Some minor amendments to Areas Eight, Eleven, and Twenty. The owners are Ignite CDA as well as Riverfest LLC. And we have representation from both here this evening. So we have Tony Burns from Ignite. We have Ann Butler, Ken Boss, and Rod Rada representing Riverfest LLC. And then we have Phil Boyd from Welch Comer as the applicant, and he will be presenting following my presentation. So your decision point this evening is, should the Planning and Zoning Commission approve Amendment Number Five to the Atlas Waterfront Planned Unit Development to include minor changes in the development areas Eight, specifically north of the alley, eleven and twenty? And the location specifically of these amendments is noted here on the slide. So it's Atlas Waterfront, Second Edition, Block One, Lots One through Sixteen, and Block Fourteen, Lot Fourteen. All legal noticing requirements have been met. And here is a location map. So Atlas Waterfront or Atlas Mill Site is located here. River's Edge is to the west, and Riverstone is to the east. You can see it's north of the river, south of Seltice, and I-90. Aerial photo, a close-up view of the Atlas Waterfront property. And the PUD Amendment Exhibit shows in the yellow, these are the two areas we are speaking of for the PUD Amendment this evening. And this is the illustrative plan with some updates to this area that we will be talking about. So this is the areas eleven and twenty kind of combined in this area. And this is Area Eight, north of the alley. This is a project status map that has been updated as part of this PUD Amendment. Again, you can kind of see, these areas eleven, twenty, seven are areas that have not been developed yet. They're kind of under construction, as you'll see in the images. And then, excuse me, 5A as well does not have a development team at this time. The dwelling unit count in retail areas, this is very similar to the last time I was before you. The area that changes to the development areas eleven and twenty, if there's not the fire station, it looks like there's an increase of potentially six units from prior, but we are well below the overall that's allowed as part of this project and the density that's associated with the C-17 and the PUD. And what is less than what was anticipated with the original project as well. So this is a development areas key plan that's kind of helpful for keeping track of all the, the numbers that we reference. Again, we're really tonight just looking at Area Eight, north of the alley, indicated in blue, eleven and twenty. And these are the proposed amendments. So I'll quickly walk through these and some of the other slides, and then Phil Boyd will be covering some of these in a little bit more detail, like what are the specific requests and the justification and kind of comparison to other development areas within their projects, so you can kind of understand that. But largely, for Area Eight is just some slight changes regarding the setbacks. And as you'll see in some of the images, it's kind of an unusual situation with the utility easement, and there are some extra setbacks from what's the curb line, and so it just doesn't match what's within the rest of the project or what you would see from the street. And so we're just trying to make that work a little bit better to match the rest of the development, make it easier for them to develop those lots, and then also to make the side yard consistent. So we're looking at kind of those, changes to the side yard, and then the changes to the front yard, as well as the setbacks specifically to the porch, front porch setbacks. Also allowing planters as part of the porch or front yard setback with flat work only. And then for Area Eleven, reducing the side yard very slightly from six to five feet, allowing the fire station as a possible civic use. This is something that is exploratory at this point, but just wanted to include it in case this does look like an ideal site for the fire department. And so that would be off of Topsaw Lane. And then also adding in some performance standards for some of the uses of the townhouses, the single-family, multifamily, and reducing the front yard setbacks. The Area Twenty, similarly, this is an area, so this is that area. Eleven and Twenty is what we used to call Mount Hink. So that was kind of the big mound of dirt that was there. And so from the lumber operations in the past, they had some of the milling soil and some of the, the wood shavings all kind of together, piled it up. So we've, we're working on removing all that and putting in structural soil for development. And so based on that, there's some areas where it just isn't going to be suitable for structural soil, but it allows some great opportunities for doing some cottage courtyard development with some green space. And so that's one of the revisions there, and that also then dictated kind of the need for changing the orientation of where the garages are and the setbacks associated with that, and including some development standards for what's called the cottage court, in terms of kind of the dimensional requirements and having a reduced setback for the single-family rear yard off of the Prairie Trail on the east, so reducing that down to 10 feet. And then just clarifying again, as I mentioned, some of the land uses, setbacks. This is the image that I was talking about for Area Eight, where it's really easier just to see from kind of the perspective of these drawings to see what already exists, and then kind of the extra setback that would be required for their project if we were to say you have to have kind of this extra green space versus being able to shift the buildings way up to the, the front. So I'll, I'll cover that in more detail. There are seven findings that I'll walk through this evening, and largely, most of these have not changed from the prior ones, so I'll kind of note when they have not changed versus when they have changed to keep the presentation moving forward quickly. So the first one, the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and future land use place type. This is the planned development place type, and that is for projects such as this that have been approved with the planned unit development. There are a number of comprehensive goals and objectives that are included in your staff report, and then you have the handout as well. And so these are ones that you have looked at before. If you have any questions, I can go into those. But the, the CI, that's Community Identity. ER is Environment and Recreation. And then GD is Growth and Development. And then JE is Jobs and Economy. These are the exhibits you've seen for the other requests this evening. So the same thing, looking at it for the Atlas site specifically. So the existing and planned bicycle network, the walking network, and the transit network in the site is located in this location on all three images. Finding B2, that the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties. And so this is a land use map showing kind of the development, just in some blocks, show largely, there's a lot of areas that are still vacant, but there's quite a bit that's under construction and occupied that's single-family. And then we have some multifamily with the apartments that are built out and occupied as well. And then the commercial use that exists now with Doma Cafe. This, again, is this illustrative concept plan, and you can see the updates to this area. So eleven and twenty with this cottage court, the green space. Finding B3, that the proposal is or is not compatible with the natural features of the site and adjoining properties. So the physical characteristics, the site largely slopes downward from Seltice toward the river. And so there was quite a grade change before, the pre-existing grade change had approximately 45-foot elevation drop. We've done a lot of earthwork and moving, but there still is some nice drops. But it, now it makes a lot of sense, because you can have streets at different levels and some nice views for the different streets and home sites. So here's some photos, I'll be showing you photos on the next slide. These are the locations, so we'll kind of start here on the east side. Looking photo one, looking kind of to the northeast. Two, looking north. Three, we'll be looking east across this Area Eleven and Seven. Four, looking north along Hartwood. And then five is really looking at Area Eight. And you'll be able to see the alley and the homes here. And then this is looking north at Area Eight that's largely developed. So here's the first one, again, kind of on the east side over off Suzanne Road. So you can see the site's looking east back toward Casa Court, and the trail runs here, you can see I-90 Bridge. And then here is looking kind of north towards Seltice Way and the construction site. So this is kind of that Mount Hink area, some other images that are a little bit better. So this is looking at Areas Seven, Eleven, looking north, looking east and north. So this is, again, looking eastward mostly, you can kind of see Seltice up here. And then this is looking north up Hartwood Road. Looking east from Lumber Lane, Vineyard Road intersection. So this is the Area Eight, and then the alley is here, and these are homes in Area Eight. And then these are the apartments that are north of the site. And then this is looking straight north at homes that are on the south side of the alley within Area Eight. And here's some, just some different images, so you can kind of see what's going on from more of a bird's eye perspective from the drone imagery. So we have the apartments here, this is that Doma Cafe, some other apartments. This is Area Eight that's been developed, and then this is the vacant portion that's north of the alley that we're looking at this evening for setbacks. We have Areas One and Two here. And then here's kind of looking back, this is the, the product that Toll Brothers is doing. These are the ones Riverfest is doing. This is 5B, Area 5B, this is 5A. There's no developer for that, and this is Area Thirteen. That's going to be that mixed use of the commercial site. So you can see some development here. This is that Hartwood Drive, and this is kind of the Seven and Eleven. And then Twenty is kind of off the screen. And then here is that area we're looking at. This is the Mount Hink area that's largely been reduced, and we're working on prepping that for development. And this is Area Six in the foreground here with the park. Finding B4, that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing public facilities and services. So obviously, the site started out, it's kind of the lumber mill was there for a while, and that was removed, it was just vacant. So we were, when this project started, we had to put in all the infrastructure. And so the infrastructure is all in there for the first two phases, and so we'll be working on the infrastructure for Phase Three. There is a slight update to the traffic comment. So our city engineer, Chris Bosley, just noted that he reviewed this PUD amendment, and the small increase in density as a result of the PUD modification is unlikely to have a noticeable impact on traffic. And that's in that Areas Eleven and Twenty. And as I noted, from the numbers I have from Welch Comer, it looks like there's only six units, so it is really negligible. And then there is an updated fire comment, because now we're including this possible fire station site. And so they have indicated that they have determined through some of their work that they are in the need of a fire station site that's between one and one and a half acres, somewhere along the Seltice Way corridor. They're doing some additional studies that they hope to have done in January or February to help determine if this is a suitable site or not. In the interim, we've included this as a allowable use as part of this requested PUD amendment. And here is that site. This would largely, we'd probably have to do a little bit of redesign if this ends up being the site, but just so you can kind of see in the context of Areas Eleven and Twenty, and then Area Seven here. Updated wastewater comment, so they have been working closely with Welch Comer as well on, there's one of the conditions, and I'll show you that, that that's no longer needed because the, they've been able to install that emergency generator. And then now they've just kind of added some additional details on, you know, if there's an increase in units, where the flows need to go. And so that's all been engineered and worked through. Finding B5, that the proposal does or does not- Finding B five, that the proposal does or does not provide adequate private common open space area as determined by the commission, no less than ten percent of gross land area free of buildings, streets, driveways, or parking areas. The common open space shall be accessible to all users of the development and usable for open space and recreational purposes. There are no changes. As noted at the last PUD amendment, the project has twenty-five percent open space, which exceeds that requirement, and it's all open to the public. Here's an image showing all of the open space, as well as the hill climb areas that connect through to the different neighborhoods. Finding B six, that off-street parking does or does not provide parking sufficient for users of the development. There are no changes with this PUD amendment. Finding B seven, that the proposal does or does not provide for an acceptable method for the perpetual maintenance of all common property. This is, as it's been established the whole time, there is a master association, and that'll transfer over once eighty percent of the property is owned by individuals. And there are a number of conditions other than the ones I'll show you for wastewater, they've all been adopted previously. So these ones you've adopted, these are the revised ones, so number six is no longer required, the one that struck through, because that generator has been installed. And then these three were added, just to kind of clarify the timing and what would be triggered if there needs to be a new wastewater study, and then how the discharge would work and into which basins, and additional hydraulic modeling. So that's all been worked through.
Can I, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
Initially, when you gave an overview, you talked about Areas Eleven and Twenty actually being less than what was initially designed for population density. Since then, a few times, you've talked about increased densities. So I have not been here for all of the different amendments, but is it because the amendments have gone through kind of a shrinking and growing process, or?
I, I, thank you for bringing that up. So I should clarify, so the whole project has reduced in the number of units, not Areas Eleven and Twenty.
Thank you.
Eleven and Twenty had an additional increase of, it looks like, about six units.
Six units, got it, thank you.
Yes, thank you, appreciate you making that clarification. And then here are the other additional conditions that were already approved for the project. So the decision point this evening is the commission will need to consider this PUD amendment number five to include minor changes to develop in Areas Eight, specifically north of the alley, Eleven and Twenty in the development standards, and make findings to approve with conditions, deny or deny without prejudice. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Additional questions for Hillary? I guess not, you're off the hook. Thank you very much. Let me back up real, real quick, and I'm supposed to poll the commission for any conflicts of interest. Seeing none, we'll record that. The first person on the sign-up sheet is the, speaking for the applicant, is Phil Boyd, who of course is in favor and does wish to speak, and name and city for the record, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingles, Phil Boyd, Welch Comer Engineers, Corlaine.
And I will swear you in, do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
And for control room, we'll give Phil more than three minutes.
Okay, thank you, I'll.
But not all night.
Nope, nope, I'll try to expeditiously move through this. As Hillary said, we're talking about two areas, Area Eight and Areas Eleven and Twenty. I'll address each one of them separately. So starting with Area Eight, this is the amended plat. I want to just remind maybe, or let the commissioners know, that this was originally not platted with the alley in it. So some of the changes that I'm going to show you tonight were generated because the plat was changed from a front-loaded to an alley-loaded configuration after the current owner, Riverfest, purchased it. And that's what triggered some of these changes. And Hillary showed these, and I want to walk through these carefully. Architects West, Rod Rata put these together, and I'm going to try to carefully walk through why this request is being made. In the rest of the Atlas neighborhood, we intentionally created a relationship between the back of the walk and the front of the house at fifteen feet. And that was an intentional relationship, so the pads and the private space could have a little bit of separation but still interact with each other. On the existing veneer, up on Vinear Road, the relationship between the back of the walk is actually somewhere around, it's about twenty feet. And it's because there's this little green space here that is a byproduct of when the plat was changed from being front-loaded to alley-loaded. And I can really bore you with the details if you'd like me to, but I'll just leave it at that. And if you want the details, we'll get into it. So the proposal is to change this setback and move the, allow the house to move forward, so the relationship between the back of the walk and the front of the house is fifteen feet, which would be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. But to accomplish that, we have to change the technical setback from fifteen feet from the right-of-way like is here to ten feet from the right-of-way. So hopefully that makes sense. It's really just the relationship between the back of the walk and the front of the house. This is another image that shows that in plan view, and again, this is a product that Rod provided, where we're trying to change this setback here, or we want to change this setback here from fifteen feet to ten feet. And I already went over the images here. The one thing I'll point out here is you can see this planter that has been added. This actually might be the first time the Riverfest group is seeing it, because the architectural design, the Atlas Architectural Design Review Committee was looking at the proposed architecture of the homes, which I'll show you in a slide here in a second, and wanted to create a little bit more separation between the private space and the public space. So I might sound like I'm giving you doublespeak, because I'm talking about you're trying to tighten up the relationship between the back of the walk, but you also want to be able to create a sense of privacy from the homeowners in an aesthetically pleasing way. And I won't have claimed to have come up with this, Hillary and Del Hatch came up with it. So I'll show it to you here in a, in a second. But are there any questions on this part before Commissioner Ingles, if that's okay to ask you guys if you have questions?
Oh, I have too.
Okay, before I move on, because I know.
So does that increase the footprint of the actual house by, by adding that?
No.
No, so it's really just moving that building forward?
Yes.
So we're not expanding that footprint and upping the price?
Correct.
Good idea.
Yep.
Thank you.
So this is, this is the very nice renderings that Architects West did, that you can see of the proposed product here. This is not the final configuration, because it has not completely gone through the architectural design review part of it. But we sketched in this planter here, and you can see the relationship between the walk. And here's one without a planter on it, this patio here, and it's kind of open to everybody. And so one of the ideas that came up was to put this planter here, integrate it with a walk, and then once you put some growies in there, some plants in there, you'll create this nice private-public space separation. So that's why we added that provision in there. We hope to be able to convince Architects West and Riverfest to do this, because it's not a gigantic expenditure, and we think it will enhance the aesthetics of the, of the product. So those are the requests. This is the development standards for the commissioners that have been on here before. You've, you've seen these, and we have this kind of running update where you see all the edits in here, and the current ones are these purple ones. Hillary mentioned the setback between the homes is being reduced from six, the request is to reduce the setback from six to five feet, which is also consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So moving on to Eleven and Twenty, we'll address those in two different parts. First, I want to show you the topography, which was part of the driver of some of the deviation requests that we're going to have. This is the aspirational topography, which doesn't currently exist out there, because we're still short of fill material. As we excavated the site, we had made estimations of how much non-structural soils were there, and we went beyond that. There was much more non-structural soil than we anticipated. And so when we went to backfill at the soil we had available, didn't allow us to get up to our aspirational finished grade. We anticipate acquiring enough structural soils by February, March of twenty-five to get to this aspirational grade. But you can see the topography, that this is Southeast Way, there's quite a bit of drop here, so this becomes a lower area here, and then there's more drop here, and then there's drops as you come, grade drops as you come from this alley through these twin homes. This is the cottage court, and there's a little bit of elevation change against that, through that, and then another drop through here. And that is really just necessitated by about our availability to get structural soils. If we get more, we'll improve upon the grading. But this is a design that allows a little bit of a stair step, so you don't have this homogeneous elevation of rooftops. You have a little bit of movement in the tops of the roofs, plus it's what we can accomplish with the current grading.
What are the, what is the variation on those lines from line to line? Is that a two-foot drop?
Those are one-foot, those are one-foot contours, yeah. And so they're, they're set up to kind of accomplish what you would anticipate, is you would drive in on the garage elevation, and when you went up to your living floor, you're looking out at the courtyard. And then these are just in reverse. Hillary mentioned, I'm sorry, Hillary mentioned that there was some non-structural soils that we didn't have anywhere to put them, and so we ended up consolidating this in this courtyard area in a way that will allow us to build homes in here and here. We've worked on all the footing setbacks and the splay of the footing, so the homes will be on structural soils. But this area is non-buildable, so we had anticipated this years ago, and had thought, well, if we completely don't have anywhere to put our non-structural soils, we'll end up putting them in the courtyard. Because the courtyard idea, again, Hillary probably deserves, does deserve credit for this, because we were talking about what to do with it on one of our design meetings, and she said, well, I'll send you some cottage court photographs. And this is some stuff, and I showed it to the Ignite Board. Everyone really liked the idea of this, because it was a different product type. It allowed us to go a little bit smaller while still having green space. So higher density, lower potential price point, which was something that the Ignite Board wanted to accomplish in the neighborhood, because as you guys know, a lot of the product there is, is at an upper price point. So this is the inspiration of the idea to develop this layout in this cottage court area. On Area Eleven here, there are two different scenarios that might be built here. One is the townhomes in this configuration, and if you remember the topography, it's kind of set down a little bit. And so by building townhomes in here, we could rear-load them, they'd have a little bit of a view out in this direction. There's also an option for the fire station here, if it's approved with the deviation request tonight. It's relatively expensive to build here, because you'd have to put quite a retaining wall here, because this fire station needs to be at the same elevation as Atlas Road, because the, the fire truck movement would be to come in off of Hartwood, come through here, this is their garage. This is literally the same footprint as the Atlas Fire Station up on Atlas Road, if you're familiar with that. When there was a fire, they would exit out this way, there would need to be signals on Southeast Way, so the traffic would stop, and they would continue across the Michigan left if they were westbound. So it's a, it's a relatively complicated site to build. But the, as Hillary mentioned, the Ignite Board and the city would like to have the option to consider it as a potential. These are the same edits to the development standards for Area Eleven, just a few of them, which Hillary went through earlier. And then moving on to Area Twenty, as we talked about here, the idea was to increase density with these, with the courtyard. The challenge, as you can imagine, is getting road circulation through here with the changing topography. This is a public road, this is a tract that would be an alley, so these homes are technically rear-loaded, but these homes are technically front-loaded. And the current standards didn't allow for that. So that's one of the requests we wanted to provide for, also reducing the setback here, so we could push these homes as far towards the cottage court that made sense, and leaving sufficient area for a driveway, so you could, because you know folks are going to park in their driveway. So leaving a little bit of space here for the driveway, these are kind of the maximum size homes that would fit in there. And then going to a thirty-by-eighty-foot lot was also a deviation request to reduce the size of the lot. Again, because we're trying to drive density here. So those are the standards, the deviations that we have as well in here, and Hillary went through. And this big strikeout here is again the, the change of description of the area. Hopefully, I tried to go through that relatively quickly, because I thought you might have questions, and I'm glad to go back.
Can we swing back to the Prairie Trail?
This one here?
Yeah, those ones. Right on the opposite side is the small singular houses.
Yes.
So they're empty all year round almost. But there's this green space that is the no man's land.
Yes.
It's ugly.
Yes.
It's not treed, and I don't know what the city's intent is with that, but now we're putting those Prairie Trail houses ten feet from the trail. And that's a very busy trail. We got cyclists there going thirty-five miles an hour, not fifteen, and if they plant into that fence, they'll break their necks. It's dangerous. And I don't know what the spacing is off the asphalt end to that fence line, because it is dangerous. I've seen the crashes, and I walk it really regularly. And then who maintains that, those no man's land off right and left of, you know, of the asphalt?
Yes. So currently, through the machinations of the city transferring ownership of this original parcel, the big parcel, from the city to Ignite, that section of the trail actually went to Ignite. So technically, Ignite still owns that section of trail. So we're actually taking advantage of that to address exactly what you're talking about. If we're going to go build homes here, we don't want the homes looking out on the Prairie Trail and then that unmaintained area beyond it that backs up to the existing homes. So our intent is to take that area on the east side of the trail, use some of it for stormwater treatment. So we will actually take the stormwater out of here, pipe it across the trail into swales on the west side, and then landscape it. So these homes are not looking necessarily directly at the other homes in that unmaintained area. It will become part of the master HOA to maintain that area, and then the trail, and that will be given back to the city, because they want the trail. We'll just, the HOA will retain an easement on top of it to maintain that portion of it. On the safety aspect of the setback from the edge of the trail to the fence line.
On the, on the west, that westerly fence?
Yes. We'll, we'll have to dig into that, because there's a typical shy distance there that we deal with, but we'll dig into that a little more detail to confirm that we've got a sufficient setback there.
Yeah, they'll maintain maybe. We drive around the city, and you can see where an HOA stops and doesn't look past their fences, and it's just a mess.
Yeah, the intent is, is that the HOA will main, this, this will be part of the HOA maintenance, and this area down through here will be part of the HOA maintenance, because it would be part of their general loop that they're currently doing. It would just be added on to it, as well as the cottage court here.
Okay.
Other questions? Phil, you sat through the previous hearing, and I was, it's kind of unusual that we have an applicant actually throw out a, you know, a price point for a house, I think with three twenty-five or three, whatever. Well, I mean, that's unusual that we hear that. And I'm not trying to press you for that here, but you know, one of the criticisms that, you know, folks say is, you know, this is these gargantuan million-dollar, multimillion-dollar houses. And I think personally, I just think part of that is, you know, expected, you know, when you build houses right next to the water, they're going to be kind of high-end. And in return, we got a lot of great waterfront amenities. That was kind of the great trade-off here. That said, could you speak to these cottages in Area Eleven and Twenty as the previous occupant, at least, you know, she said they're fifteen hundred square feet-ish or whatever? Can you, can you at least talk a little bit comparatively, you know, if there's the real high-end ones, the multimillion, how do these position, you know? Something like a guy like me might be able to afford one of these things, or, I mean, just give me a sense of that?
Sure. Yeah, the, the, the short answer is, is we don't. Yeah, the, the, the short answer is, is, is we don't, we have worked through a, a number of models to look at the potential price point there. And I can't say that we have a specific, I could say what the price point is, but I won't say what the price point is. The size of the units are somewhere in the 1,200 to 1,500 square foot range. And the board's objective overall for Phase 3 is to create a lower-priced product that they can there while retaining architectural standards that don't negatively impact the remaining neighborhood. So the, the, the fit and finish of the exterior of the homes, the architectural styles, the requirements will still be put upon the developers in Phase 3. But by increasing the density, we hope to drive the price point down. And the board's considering other options to also drive the price point down by underwriting some of the land. But that is not anything we're prepared to get into here.
Yeah. I'm not coming from a perspective of we're trying to create quote-unquote affordable housing or something. I'm just, is it something that more local people might get into? And I, I think the answer would be yes.
Yes, it is. And it, it was a priority of the board and why we have worked on this for so long of trying to figure out how do we achieve a higher density there.
If it's a 1,200-foot, 1,200-square-foot house, it's going to be a more spendier one because it's going to be higher finishes than that than the track home out in the Prairie somewhere. But it might be approachable for a local person.
Sure.
Thank you. Other questions? You'll get a chance for rebuttal, and we'll move on. Next on the, first on the sign-up sheet here is Rod, is it Rada, Ruda? Ruda? Thank you. You indicated you're in favor. You would like to speak. Come up forward, name and city for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Rod Rada. I live in Coeur d'Alene.
And do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help God?
I do.
Three minutes, please.
Right, thank you. Well, I, I, I am an architect with Architects West. And I, I worked in the design of the houses that I represent our client on, Area 8. I just want to give you some commentary. I'm, I'm not here to give you technicalities. But our, you know, our, our client, we were pressing on a previous PUD amendment. And from, from a reference standpoint, a similar, like, like Hillary mentioned in her presentation, a similar amendment was, was passed for a very similar product. And also, just, just to mention something that it, it, although Phil did not mention it, it, it affected us a lot, is that the, when the, that original alley was, was introduced into that area, the way, the way that alley was designed, it, it pushed up against that north side of Area 8. And in addition, we had that, that, that additional setback, which, which created somewhat of a hardship to develop this individual lots. They're, they're super tight. They're about, you know, 20, 24, I think they were originally 24 feet in width. And to put a unit in there, and then they were crammed between lumber and the alley. So one of the main issues that we had to design the unit is that we didn't have a driveway at all. And then along lumber, you, you didn't have any front parking on top of that. So there was no, if you did not use your garage to park your vehicle, there was no additional parking for visitors or anything to use. So that was something that, you know, it would, it would, it would benefit tremendously to be able to shift those units forward. And in addition to that, the, the previous units were maybe doubled in size. And they, they had an additional story on top of them. Now it's just a single story above the garage. And, and because of that, those units being squashed, to have the garage, then the stairs to go to the upper level, it, it was, it was just very difficult to get those units to work. And then, you know, then, then we just had a single level on top of that. So from, from a typology standpoint, I guess, it's a, it's a smaller unit than it was previously. And it got, it got, to your, answer your question, it got pushed forward. So I, I'm in favor. I, I live in Coeur d'Alene. We, we use the public amenity along the river all the time. We, we love the development. We feel that there's, there's, there's a benefit to this unit from, from a citizen. I think it provides a transition from a typology of those apartments as it steps down to the, to the larger units, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up is Dick Cook. Dick, you did not indicate favor or opposition, but you did indicate you would like to speak.
I can, I'll rescind that right now.
Don't? No comment. Okay, thank you. And I have Lynn Mort, Mortz?
It's Martin.
Martin. Martin. Neutral, and you'd like to speak. Name and city for the record, please.
My name is Lynn Martin, and I live in Coeur d'Alene.
Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help God?
Yes, I do.
Three minutes, please.
Okay. All I have to say is that my house is actually on the alleyway in Section 8. And I am all for moving the, the new houses as far towards the north to leave more room in the alleyway if possible. So I agree with that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Applicant Phil, would you have any rebuttal you would like to offer? No, therefore, we'll close public comment. And I would ask the commission if they have some discussion and/or motions, findings and such. Commissioner Ward?
You know, Mr. Boyd makes some of the best presentations I've ever heard. I would feel wrong voting against anything he presented, even if I don't agree. So, Eddie, great presentation.
Thank you for that. Others? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Go ahead.
Okay. The matter came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, November 12th, PUD 419M5, owner Ignite CDA and Riverfest LLC. Phil Boyd was the applicant. Findings of fact. The Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the following facts, A1 through 11, have been established on a more probable-than-not basis, as shown on the record before it and on the testimony presented at the public hearing. Items under number one, all regard procedural matters such as noticing and public hearing. All that has been satisfied. Comprehensive future land use plan designation is the planning, development, place, type. Plan, development, place types are located that have completed the plan unit development application process. That is, in fact, what is happening with the Atlas property. Staff identify the comprehensive plan goals and objectives for particular consideration. And they are listed on Pages 16 and 17 of the staff report. The comprehensive plan goal is to be considered. Maintain a high quality of life for residents and businesses, and that is accomplished with this development. Preserve and enhance the beauty of the area and health of Coeur d'Alene. Provide diverse recreational options. All of that being done particularly with spectacular lakefrontage parks and walkway. Develop a mix of land uses throughout the city to balance housing and employment. Ensure appropriate high-quality infrastructure to accommodate community needs and future growth. And just support development of the multimodal transportation system for all uses with the transit hub right adjacent to this. Plus, bicycles and pedestrian modes of transportation are required. The Atlas Waterfront property is bound by the Spokane River to the south, Southeast Way to the north, Rivestone to the east, and the Rivers Edge Apartments to the west. Surrounding land uses include multifamily, single-family, open space recreation, commercial, as well as the transit center. Natural features of the site and adjoining property would not be impacted by the requested PUD modification. The request of modification to development areas 8, 11, and 12 would not impact the city's ability to serve the public with facilities and services. PUD Amendment Number 5 would not impact the total open space area, which is 25%. It exceeds the required 10% requirement. The project would provide sufficient parking for users of the development. The PUD Amendment does not change the parking. The Atlas Waterfront Property would be responsible, Association would be responsible for providing perpetual maintenance of all common property. Conclusions of law. Based on the foregoing findings of fact, the Planning Commission makes the following conclusion of law. The proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plans in gold. The design and planning of the site is compatible with the location, setting, and existing uses. The proposal is incompatible with natural features of the site and adjoining properties. The location, design, and size will be adequately served by existing public facilities and services. The proposal does provide private common open space as determined by the commission with a 25%, only 10% required. Off-street parking does provide parking sufficient for the use of the development. The proposal does provide for adequate and for an acceptable method of perpetual maintenance of the common property. The Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to the foregoing findings of fact and conclusions of law has determined that the requested PUD amendment does comply with the required evaluation and should be approved, subject to the conditions enumerated in the staff recommendation numbered 1 through 18.
So we have a motion by Ward to approve PUD?
I need to add one more thing.
Okay.
Can we backtrack to B3, conclusions of law? I cannot agree with the proposal is compatible with the natural features of the site and adjoining properties. This is a site that is in motion. The soils are unpredictable and not clean. I would like to state that it's the proposal will be compatible with the final structurally capable soils of the site and adjoining properties. That is a liability. And I do not want to see sinkholes. I don't want to see, you know, foundations that are failing. And so we do not have that yet. We cannot say that we have those compatible natural sources. This is not a natural property. It has been filled. It's been, they took it down 18 feet, they took it down another 18 feet, and they've been filling and filling and filling. Those structural soils are unpredictable. And I want to make sure that B3 is met before we start to pour foundations and put in, put in all of our services. I've seen failure. I don't want to see it here. So I want to see that B3 changes the terminologies, because it isn't. It currently is not meeting that standard.
Commissioner Ward, would you wish to change the?
Can we talk about that real quick? I just got a question, I think probably for Hillary. Nuclear densometers and soil compaction rates and requires to fill at a level that is commensurate with whatever the code says before you put anything on it. Is that part of this process?
The building permit requires the geotech studies. So that's something that's very specifically required as part of the.
Would you say that's implied within the process, or?
It is.
We, we don't need to add code that's already provided?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Randy, you agree?
Yes.
But as of today, this B3 does not exist.
So I have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Ward has a motion. As he, as he went through this whole thing, I have to walk through the motion. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ward to approve PUD-4-19M5 with the conditions noted. Second by Commissioner Koppus. Roll call, please.
Wait, 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 wait. Let, let's have some discussion on, on what Lynn was saying.
I'm just, I'm just, this is, it's the procedure. I, I.
Are you taking a vote now?
Yes.
Well, before I vote, I'd like to hear Phil's comment, Lynn's comment, see if he'd be willing to modify this B3 item.
B3.
I'm.
Yes, the standard procedure is after there's a motion and second, there can be further debate.
Is there discussion on the motion? Okay?
Correct.
Okay. So is there discussion on the motion? And we can continue that.
We can reel it back, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Commissioner.
My discussion is I'd like to hear Phil's response to Lynn's comments. Because both of you are way more knowledgeable in the stuff than I am. But both these, both of them make sense. And I just like to hear a little dialogue between if you'd be willing to modify your comment on B3 to be consistent with what Lynn was talking about.
I understand what Lynn is saying. And I appreciate the fact that things could change. But I feel like the system we have, the reviews we have are adequate to let this stand as the proposal is compatible. I mean, this was a lumberyard. It's not like someone was chopping down trees. So I think that there are some concerns, but I have to think the developer is very cognizant of that. And truthfully, I place a lot of faith in Mr. Boyd's presentation, that he's covered all of that and pretty much knows what's going on. So I would rather leave the motion just the way it is, as it is written in the, in the conclusions of law.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Koppus?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. This is, when you, when Commissioner Fleming spoke to you putting foundations on unstable ground, the point of clarification for me is that, that is, I mean, passing that nuclear densometer test is really hard. I've had to do it, and it's, the compaction rate is ridiculous. It's way over what the natural soil is in the given surrounding. So I, I think that embedded within this process, before any foundation is laid, any footings are put in place, there's going to be some people out there required, engineering people out there required to stipulate that this ground is ready for footings. It's ready for foundations. And that the basis of that is engineering math that we are not liable for. That's just code. So to add additional words where there's already words that address that seems to me to be redundant.
Can I clarify one thing, too? Can we actually change that finding anyway? I don't, that's just part of our findings. It is or is not. Like, we don't get the opportunity to change that sentence, do we?
That is right out of municipal code. And if you decide not to find that, then you can't approve the PUD.
Right. We, we basically have to read it as the code states.
But it's saying the proposal is compatible, and I'm assuming that's as of today.
Right. So then you're saying we would have to say it is not, but we can't modify?
The verbiage.
The verbiage, yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call.
McCracken?
Yes.
Koppus?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Fleming? No.
Okay, that is a final decision for the PUD amendment. As a final decision, as such, note that any final decision made by P&amp;Z Commission tonight is appealable within 15 days of the decision pursuant to Section 17.09.705 through 17.09.715, a Title 17 zoning chapter. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I think Commissioner Luttrell, you asked for a comment?
Well, that's the one we had on before on 15th Street. We had some interesting conversation on that that, that we haven't had before. Well, that maybe we need to look at more detail, was concentration. You know, maybe it was way overuse of the property. I'd like us to maybe and somehow come to talk about that a little bit over time because maybe there's something we should be doing in that area. I don't know what it is. But, you know, once we're really well-taken, that, that it is, you know, high concentration and is there something we can, we can do to assist that? Speaking along the same lines, it's interesting to hear that we've reached the price, price point now what affordable housing is, which I don't know if we can do that based up here. But I, I would like to talk about that concentration in some fashion.
Okay.
If we can as a group. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Speaking to the motion, I would like to comment that at this time of year, Mr. Ingalls, who used to be a, a real city employee after the military, had something to do with the gala that's going on in the city streets, starting on the 12th.
Today, it started. Today started.
You, you, you always talk about leaf fest, because I think you named it.
Uh, maybe I, maybe I coined that term.
Right, well. And I think it's one of the neatest things that the city can do. And if you already want to see clean streets, come by my neighborhood and you can eat off them.
If your leaves aren't out, get them out now.
That's right.
Real quick. Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here we go. Thank you all.